Test, test. Sorry about that. I just enjoy that. All right. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call to order the February 7th, 2023 meeting of the Board of Education in order accordance with the Government Code Section 54950 executor and Education Code Sections 35140 executor at 5:02 or 17:02. Okay, at this point, we're gonna be adjourning to closed session for the purposes of discussing matters expressly authorized by Government Code Section 3549.1, 54956.8, 54956.95, 54957, and 54957.6. And we'll be discussing, number one, public employee, I'm sorry, correction, public employment per Human Resources report, two, public employment appointment, three, conference with labor negotiators, Dr. Mike Matthews, Superintendent Dr. Rick Lopez, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and no one else. In regards to CSEA, APLE, and PLUM. Welcome. And number four, we're gonna be conference with legal counsel due to some anticipated litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9D2. Is there anyone present that would like to address any of these items? All right, seeing that there's no one there, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn to closed session at 5:04. Okay, folks. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene into regular session at 6:04, 18:04. Okay, so the report in closed session is that there's nothing to report from closed session. At this moment, we're gonna go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm gonna ask Trustee Blades to lead us in that.
Please stand.
Okay, so at this point, we're gonna go ahead and do our roll call. We have Trustee Blades, we have Trustee Frazier, oh, sorry, Trustee Anderson, and we have our student board member, Trustee Bang. Thank you. We are missing Trustee Buck today, and, yeah, thanks. Okay, folks, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the February 7th, 2023 Board of Education Agenda as recommended by the Superintendent.
I'll second.
I just have one question about this. As we're approving our agenda tonight, I was wondering, Mr. President, we do have a special surprise for our audience and our viewers at home. I was wondering if we could possibly move our communications and board report in front of public comment, just so our young guests will make it home, just in case we have a, you know, a long, a long meeting.
I see no problem with that. Any other board members? Okay, all right, that's what we'll do, we'll go ahead and change that. Okay, at this point, we do have a portion, a recognition portion.
We need to take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Just to be clear, are we, when are we doing this? When are we doing the board?
Right after your superintendent's report.
So that's where it already is, right?
No, it's after, it's after public comment. So it just before public comment, just switching it around.
Make sure you remind me. Okay, so I'll go ahead and take a, take a vote, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Okay, now, at this point, we do have a recognition. Dr. Matthews, if you'll go ahead and take care of that.
Thank you, President Youngblood. We haven't been doing any recognition, so it's a real pleasure tonight to do a recognition tonight. So President Youngblood, trustees, executive cabinet member, you've heard it said, we've said it a lot, that our people are the heart and soul of the Placentia Yorbalenda Unified School District, and this stands to be true of the individual we've set aside time to recognize tonight, Valencia High School mathematics teacher, Ms. Wendy Umacubo. Yep. Okay. All right, I'm just getting started, and we have all this going, a nice fan club you have going on here, and so thank you for that enthusiasm. Wendy was selected for the Carlsen Family Foundation Outstanding Teachers of America Award for 2022. This award is presented annually to exceptional California public high school teachers nominated only by former students who believe their former teachers had a life-changing and positive impact on them. So I'm gonna ask Wendy and Ms. Beverly Young, the Carlsen Family Foundation Director, to come up to the podium, please, and I'll recognize you guys up there. I won't crowd you there, I'll stay here, but so, so I just want people to see you so they know who they're applauding. So before I turn it over to Director Young, I wanna share a little bit about Wendy. She started teaching, can I say this, in 1981, okay? Making this her 42nd year at the school. You student taught in the classroom you are right now, room 1102 at Valencia High School. That was after you got your bachelor's degree and secondary teaching credential for mathematics from Cal State Fullerton. You've also received your master's in theoretical mathematics, I don't even wanna ask, and math education from CSUF. You've taught everything, and you, I believe you insist on teaching everything from basic arithmetic to AP Calculus and IB Math. As a former high school principal, you're, you're an MVP on that one, because someone who teaches your most gifted students and your most challenged students is a true gift to have at a school. You epitomize the tiger family, and you're a staple on Valencia's campus. You say that you are inseparable with Valencia High School, and we believe you. You want success for your math students, but above all, you want all the students who come to Valencia to learn, to work hard, succeed, have fun, and enjoy high school experiences as a part of Valencia's diverse population and rich history. You make meaningful connections with your students, allowing them to absorb the content you teach to engage in practical strategies. You make connections, and you create a tighter community at Valencia High School. Her husband, Leonard Takahashi, is here, also works at Valencia as their community service coordinator, substitute intervention, room teacher, and men's soccer coach. You also are a utility player, sir. He, along with their son Brandon and his partner Eric, are in attendance with us this evening to help celebrate Wendy's accomplishments. Thank you all for being here. Also here to celebrate are members of the Valencia High School Administration, including Principal Chris Hertzfeld, Assistant Principal Will Trong, and several of Wendy's colleagues. We would all agree, and including her students who nominated her, that she embodies Valencia's motto of pride, tradition, and excellence. And we certainly agree on how much Wendy means to our entire school district community and Valencia High School, but for now, we will conclude with a note that she epitomizes our four core values with an enduring commitment to excellence, collaboration, integrity, and innovation. So on behalf of the Board of Trustees, it's our honor to present you with our highest award, the You Are Advantage, You Are the Advantage Award, our district's top honor. Dr. Lopez, would you share that plaque with her? This is the You Are the Advantage Award. Wendy, thanks for all that you do and your dedication to PYLUSD, and I'll now turn it over to Beverly Young to continue our recognition.
Thank you. One of the best parts of my job is to get to come to evenings like this and continue to honor these outstanding teachers. Above and beyond as an organization that's been around about 20 years, we, up until this year, were the Carlsen Family Foundation. We just changed our name this year, but the mission is the same, and that is to recognize and reward the outstanding California public high school teachers who are changing students' lives. The process of selecting someone like Wendy, it's a long process. It starts, as you've heard, with a nomination from a former student. We talk to that student, we talk to the principal, assistant principals, other teachers at the school, counselors, and then we locate as many additional former students as we can. We talk to all of those people before the person even knows they've been nominated. Then I go out to the school and I see them in their classroom, teaching, and I have to tell you, I've spent my whole life in teacher education, and I've seen a lot of teachers teach, and I have told more people the story of what I saw in Wendy's classroom than I have in anyone else's, 'cause I stayed for two periods of her class, and I watched her teach an AP Calculus class. I taught stat at UCLA, and I couldn't have done these, these equations that she was just out of her head putting up on the board for these kids to do in the most fast-paced calculus exercise I think I've ever seen, with every kid engaged. She went from that class period to the next class, which was a newcomers' class for basic math, kids who, most of them didn't speak English. She was juggling at least three or four lessons around the room with English and Spanish, and she doesn't speak Spanish, but she was teaching geometry, shapes, addition and subtraction 10 minutes after she was doing advanced calculus. It was the most amazing display of teaching I think I've ever seen. And in both classes, every child was engaged and working. We, we go, we get hundreds of nominations every year, we narrow it down to 10. Last year, our board chose only four winners in the whole state, one of whom was Wendy. And Wendy got that award that's down in front of you. We had a banquet in November where our winners and all of our past winners, we have about 100 of them, they all come up to the San Francisco area for a banquet. At that time, we also brought Terry, Wendy's former student, who made a nomination of her, and it isn't until that night at the banquet when Wendy gets to find out the student who nominated her for the award, and Terry gives the speech presenting the award. It was a wonderful, wonderful evening. Wendy got a check from our organization for $15,000. She also gets an, she also gets an additional, I'm gonna give it to her tonight, an additional check for $5,000 to spend at her school. I always make a point of knowing that the board, the superintendent, the principals know that Wendy gets to decide how the money is spent at her school. There you go. One of the purposes, and then, and then our honorees throughout the year work with early career teachers, motivating them, supporting them, mentoring them, to encourage them to stay in teaching. We recognize these wonderful teachers, you said Wendy is in her 42nd year. The other purpose of our award is to have these teachers stay in teaching, so we're hoping that Wendy's not planning to leave teaching anytime soon. And the last thing I'll say too, before I turn it over to Wendy, is I'm also giving Wendy tonight a copy of her file that I gave the board when they considered her for this award. It has the narratives from all of the many, many students who seconded her nomination, the statements from her colleagues, and the account of the classroom observation I made when I visited her. So if, this is for Wendy to read, she hasn't seen it yet, but those of you who know and love Wendy, make her let you read this, because it's just amazing what her former students say about her. She is truly a gift to your school and to your district as a whole, you're very lucky to have her. So Wendy.
Thank, thank you so, so, so very much. Thank you to the board for this wonderful award, and Beverly for that wonderful introduction. And so I was supposed to tell you that my husband wrote my speech for tonight, and it says, "Thanks, everyone, have a good evening." He, he's kind of hungry, I think. But I, I don't think I'll get away with that, so let me just say a few more things. I, it is overwhelming and exciting when you find something that you just really love, you just love, and you can't wait to get in there and try something else differently, you can't wait to get in there and get this student successful, you can't wait to get in there and, and do the five preps that Tanya Borg handed to me one year. You, you can't wait to try and be challenged and, and try to get across another, another bridge. I'm, I'm very lucky to have landed here, I'm very lucky to have had the, the people guide me that I had. Carol Webster was my master teacher and my department chair for a long time, her partner's here tonight with us. I, I've had, Tanya gives me choices, she's the greatest, and she takes care of all, all the red tape, and Wendy gets to have all the fun and deal with the coaches, right, Dean and Mike? Okay? I just, I, I'm surrounded, I've been surrounded by really, really great, great people, and if that hadn't happened, I, I couldn't be doing this. Of course, at the end of the day, it's all about my students, thank you for coming. Sometimes you don't even know till that email comes, a telephone call comes, two years, three letters, three years. Dennis Hauser, who graduated in the mid-'80s, sent me flowers today. He sends me flowers every year, because a light went on one day and he said, "I think Mrs. Umacubo helped me with this." And he found me, and, you know, when you, you don't even know that you had an impact. And so when there's a dry day, when there's a rough day, that's what you ride on, you know, just that you are impacting someone, you know, whether you're smiling today or kind of lashing out a little bit because you're kind of frustrated with them, that's what you're riding on, is these kids over the, the 42 years, I call this my Jackie Robinson year. That gets me up every morning and, you know, brings me to Valencia. The district has been so good to me, it's given me plenty of opportunities, I've been able to be a master teacher, I've been able to be a mentor teacher, I've been on committees and, and, not real committees, 'cause Tanya takes that for me, I just go on the fun committees. And I, I get to participate with the PTSA board, with, you know, the union, I've had so many opportunities to learn. And, and the other thing that I, that I found out, once Leonard put up with me for so many years and we started having children, is that this job is great for families. You get to teach them so much, you get to bring them to the games and the theater and the choir, and the dance competitions, and expose them to so many things, and, and it's, it's been great for our family. My family, to be fair, has been the greatest support ever, the greatest support. Brandon's been coming to Valencia, what, since you're in the backpack? Yeah, I think you're in the nappy. And it's, it's been quite a journey, and I, I can safely say that I'm still at the place where I was so many years ago when I got in 1102 and got excited about teaching math, and I, I'm still there. Yeah, there's some frustration, now that COVID thing was rough, but somebody gave me the wherewithal to keep going, to smile, to figure out the best way to reach my students, to drag everyone else with me so we could keep going and maintain and go forward. I'm so grateful, I, I'm very lucky, I've got my health, and I've got a little bit of energy. And so I won't retire right now, just so you know, okay? But it's on the books, because you can't do this forever, but I thank everyone, every single person for this honor. I'll promise I'll do nice things with my money, and places where, where there's neat, and I, I just, I can't wait to get back to the classroom, I guess. Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Isn't he here? Yes. All right, wait, Beverly wants me to tell you this. So really, one of the persons who lit a fire under my math, my math lens, is, you can stay standing, Bob Janko, this is my Algebra II teacher. He and his wife Maria are here with us, and just, just lit a fire.
We're gonna take a picture in a minute, but before we do, I think we may have some board members and our student board member who wanna say something about, about you.
Hi, I just would like to say something. Making connections with our students is Mrs. Umacubo's strength, and I know this personally because just a few short years ago, she taught me geometry. And I just happened to, I don't know how, but I took geometry the year she married Leonard, and she made all of us students part of her wedding, and we felt like we were, we were there. After learning about triangles, we spent a day making cranes and folding lots and lots and lots, and lots and lots of triangles, and our cranes were there, and I, and as students, we felt like we were there, supporting her and Leonard, and we just, and she just has a way of doing that, and she continues to do it now with her flash mob dances, where she's out front with her students, you know, after all the AB, IB, and AP tests, you know, she teaches them a great dance, and she's out there with them dancing at lunch. She recognizes Pi Day, which might be a good use of the money. But I just really wanted to thank you so much for inspiring so many students, and I know so many lives have been changed because of you, so thank you.
I'd love to say something. This year, I have the honor of having Mrs. Umacubo as my AP Calculus teacher, and I just wanna say that no matter how many things I had heard about her before the year, how great she was, I mean, being in her class this year has really shattered any expectations of what I had for her and what I had for even a teacher, and like, everything that I've experienced in my life. I mean, she'll respond to your emails at 2:00 AM, but also be like the first one in the parking lot the next day, so this is really like, like students can tell, this is really just everything to Mrs. Umacubo, so congratulations and thank you.
Let's come up and take a picture, okay? We'll do a picture with the dais, Melissa, you'll tell us what to do. Enjoy dinner.
Okay, folks, while everybody is leaving and jockeying into different seats, we're gonna go ahead and continue with our meeting. This portion, I'm gonna talk about public comment. So we have public comment cards that are available in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. We provide a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given, but please let us know ahead of time so we can assure that we're prepared. We do have a civility policy. Education Code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristics that is contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth in Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. This point, I'll need to have a motion for the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 17th, 2023 meeting.
All right, I have a motion by Trustee Anderson and a second by Trustee Blades. Any comments? All right. So let's go ahead and take a vote on the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Four plus our one board trustee. All right, so at this time, we are gonna give a little bit of board information out. We'd like to have Mr. Ali come up to the podium to talk with us. Mr. Ali is the Lead Associate for Hazard, Young, Etna, and Associates, and he'll provide an overview of the process and timeline for the superintendent's search for the Board of Education. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, good evening to the distinguished president, members of the board, as well as superintendent, executive cabinet, and the general public. Now, before I get off into the presentation, I have to just say this, I had a chance to meet with the president, and we share a little something in common, we both look alike. I have nicer hair, but that's okay. So as we're talking, it becomes very clear, he and I share a lot of friends in common, believe it or not. And he got it started in Compton, I was working at the city way back when, and he was working with the fire department, and of course, we started talking, and next thing you know, we're talking about fire trucks and defective fire trucks and irregular fire trucks and the best fire trucks. And I said to myself, well, you know, we're family now, I'm gonna christen him, I'm gonna call him Mr. Sean Ali henceforth, so, so thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the discussions that we've had a chance to entertain during this process. So I'm not gonna be very long, but I did wanna simply provide an overview to the board as well as the general community with respect with respect to the superintendent's search. This is by far one of the most important searches, I believe, within any governmental entity. The selection of the chief executive of a public school system is charged with providing education to a community, building the generations, and sustaining economies. And so the community elected five board members to make a decision, and that decision would be made based upon a very aggressive and very rigorous criterion that we will work on together as we build our overall leadership profile. So this is a little bit about the firm. Service mindset, thirty-five years of executive searches, fifteen hundred plus searches in urban, rural, suburban districts. Irrespective whether it's Manhattan Beach, or Compton, or any other district. A district is a district, and the one thing is for sure, we have to educate children. And so all of us share some very commonalities and very distinguishing characteristics that we have to appreciate that are very rich in nature. But by and large, children must be educated, and that's a state's right, as well as a moral obligation that we all have. Local teams, and we work throughout California, but throughout the country. We're a very aggressive recruitment network. And so my partner, let me just jump back, Dr. Valerie Pitts, a recent retiree. She's free of the, of the school system world. She retired out of Marin County. And she does a tremendous amount of work, uh, with respect to training and developing future leaders. I consult around the country, working with school boards and superintendents around a host of issues, dealing with organizational effectiveness, org leadership, fiscal facilities. So we're very much immersed in the public school arena. We've demonstrated our commitment to equity and, and our definition is very simple, very, very non-political definition. All of us want equity. We want a community that's representative of our country. We all believe that every child has the right to learn. Free access to special education services, high-quality food. That's not debatable, nor is it political. And I can tell you, I've talked to several of these board members as a part of our overall engagement process, and they've shared that sentiment. And so we want the best superintendent for this community, someone who believes in placenta yorba linda, but someone who believes that every single child can achieve irrespective of color and their special ability and or ec, you know, economics. So it's very important. So we use research and analytics, we have a phenomenal back office staff, and we're very responsive. These board members have emailed. And this lady here, I gotta tell you, she, this lady deserves a raise, Mr. Superintendent. I want her to receive a raise immediately. She is more responsive than my mother. My mother loves me immensely, but this lady here, you email her, she responds right back in two seconds. You ask her to do something, she gets, she gets it done quickly. I mean, we're gonna take her. Well, you know, it's okay, we like to get slapped in the head on occasion, all right, no problem. All right, so folks, we have a very aggressive timeline, very aggressive timeline. I believe the current superintendent is, is here. One-year contract, and of course, that's public, so it's no secret there. And so the timeline is literally ninety days, ninety-two, ninety-five days. I just completed the Bellflower search. And that was a ninety-day search. Ninety-day search, okay? And we were able to move a phenomenal superintendent from Santa Monica, Malibu to Bellflower. So again, it can be done. So the notion of, oh, it can't be done, you need one year, no, you don't, you don't need one year. Because things change in one year, things change in one day in life, right? So this is a very aggressive search. We're gonna engage two to three weeks, meaning understanding the organization. We're gonna be talking with the student board member, he's on the list, be contacted. Gonna interview each and every board member, as well as the executive cabinet. Many of you may have already received phone calls or Zoom meetings. Because we want to hear from each and every one of you with respect to putting together this leadership profile. Then, of course, the recruitment phase. We'll be recruiting nationally. We're gonna be working with a plethora of organizations, not the least of which includes some of our local organizations that are specific to California. But, but we do want to look far and wide. And so just to be very candid with you, many superintendents are reluctant to port to California. It is a little expensive. And even though we think the superintendent's salary is pretty exorbitant, well, if you're coming from some small district in the south, the Midwest, your house might be a hundred and eighty thousand. Well, this community hasn't seen a house for a hundred and eighty thousand in a very long time, okay? Unless the school board wants to pay for the superintendent's house, which they do in many parts of the country, but that's another story. And I'm gonna get out of here before the tomatoes start flying. And so then we're gonna look at the selection process. So of course, you select, you facilitate through matching. It's very important to, to really match, this is like a marriage, as it were. You gotta match the right superintendent with the board. And when I say that, I'm, I'm meaning, you, you can't take certain superintendents and they come into a community, like this teacher you had here. Many of these teachers, they know what to do. They know exactly, they come to work each and every day. So you don't want somebody coming in here that's gonna upend the progress. Because they have a new way that they want to implement based upon what they've used in a different district. Each and every single system brings forth a different measure of mechanics, right? I mean, every car doesn't operate the same. You have electric cars, you have hybrid cars, those cars use hydrogen. That's diversity, right? And you have to respect and appreciate, you know, that measure of s, of school district administration. So again, it's very important for us to be able to listen to each and everybody, gather your opinions, and then find the right superintendent to match this district. And then, of course, the transition. This new superintendent comes in, there'll be a transition period. If we can get it all done in ninety days, Dr. Matthews will be able to hand off aspects that he's learned in the year, right? He's very well-accomplished, having served in Los Angeles County. So he knows exactly what to do and how to transition a new superintendent in. So this is the draft timeline. The timeline is very flexible. I just wanted to highlight as an example of where this job will be posted. The Association of California School Administrators, the American Association of School Administrators, also known as the Super, School Superintendent's Association. The Association of Latino Administration, Administrators, as well as superintendents, and National Alliance of Black School Educators, ED Week. These are organizations and these are periodicals where the job will be posted. And of course, again, the board makes the decision, all based upon alignment and based upon a match. If the board is comfortable with the superintendent, no matter where that person's from, then there it is. The engagement phase. Some of these dates will indeed change, but right now, we're pretty much in the planning, meeting, and discussion phase. We're meeting with individual board members. And then, of course, soon we'll launch a community survey. The community survey will be online. Each and every member within this community would have an opportunity to provide their input. All of that helps to form and again, build this leadership profile. We're gonna provide timely updates to the board. Now, just to be very candid, the subsequent updates will more than likely be in closed session pursuant to California Government Code. And so you won't see me again. I'd love to be here, but, you know, that's okay. So we'll be providing the board members' updates in closed session. Of course, it's a very confidential search, again, encased in the California Government Code. So there's nothing nefarious going on. It's a private confidential search, meaning we will not be leaking information out. We don't have anybody on Twitter or Instagram sending out pictures of potential candidates. We just can't do that for the integrity of the process, the livelihood of a superintendent aspirant, and then just the overall aspect of the board and, and their obligation to comport with the law. Recruitment phase. National state advertising, application process opens. Applications will be, uh, that process is open. It will close March 1st. Again, we're gonna aggressively recruit. Now, when we say recruit, we're not just gonna fly the jobs and let people come as they so desire. We're gonna actually go out there and steal somebody. Okay, we're gonna go out there, we're gonna poach. So we're gonna figure out what superintendents would, would align. And look, I'm a pretty straight shooter, okay? There are some folks just won't work. Just will not work. And that's my job is to be able to analyze this body, as well as to talk with the executive cabinet and look at the information that they've provided to my partner, Dr. Pitts, to make sure we get the right person. I keep stressing that, you have to get the right person in the job. And so that's very, very much important. And so we'll present a slate to the board sometime in mid-March. The board will then make their selection. Off we go down to a negotiation. We're gonna do a very in-depth background check, very important to note that and underscore, very detailed third-party background check. We want to make sure that person can balance their own checkbook, and they can also balance this checkbook. We don't want anybody with any improprieties. And we certainly wouldn't want our reputation sullied because we brought somebody who had a very questionable background. And so again, I want to stress that, and I can't stress it enough. And so then the superintendent will begin, I would assume, July 1. Who's ever looking at this district, they're gonna be watching your LCAP preparation. They're gonna be watching your budget meetings, they're gonna be looking at your first and second interims. They're gonna do all of the due diligence, watch all the board meetings, right? To make sure that it's an appropriate fit. They're gonna look at your fund balance, fiscal obligation, where's the business guy? That's, is that you? Okay, well, we gotta get it with him soon. Make sure that we can re, meet our fiscal obligations three years out, okay? And so people will then be very happy and want to come to work with, uh, the, the district. Now, people always talk about an elephant in the room. People always talk about the board. All over the country, boards are boards, doesn't matter, boards are boards. The reality is a superintendent is charged with operating and managing the day-to-day function. And if that person can't do that, then we're not gonna recommend them to you. I don't have a cousin or brother who wants the job, so that ain't gonna happen, okay? We want to make sure we get the right person here for you. All right, engagement phase, board interviews, as I talked about. Executive cabinet interviews, they're going on simultaneously. Stakeholder survey, that survey will be out pretty soon. The leadership profile, of course, within, uh, come as a result of the engagement phase. We'll look at the summary surveys, we'll look at the selection criteria and all the characteristics therein. We want to make sure that we match this person, uh, with this district. And I've talked to several board members, and again, they're very open to the, uh, any type of, of candidate, as long as they are properly aligned, and that's what we're gonna do. So, research-based stakeholder survey, this is where I'm gonna make sure I got direction from the board. I want to be very clear. Now, as far as the survey is concerned, there'll be certain elements of data that we'll disaggregate. And I want to just make sure we're clear on the fact that certificated staff, classified staff, parent, community taxpayers, students, and admin, those are the data points for which we'll pull, and that'll be a part of the information we'll present to you during the subsequent meeting. I want to make sure we're okay with that. We're not voting, we just want to make sure that, you know, we're good. If there's any other data point you'd want, you know, very transparent process, I want you to let us know, and then we can pull that data for you. But that's typically, those are the folks that we would, uh, encourage to participate and complete the survey. And that's the data that you'll have a chance to review. All right, these are just simple, uh, survey examples, and we can always provide additional examples if the board is, is so inclined. And, and this is an example of the leadership profile. So once we're done, this actually was from a district in, in Colorado. And so, of course, we aggregated all of the survey data. And of course, you build this profile. This profile is then provided to superintendent's aspirants, as it were. They have a chance to check it out and review it. The public will have an opportunity to review elements of it. Of course, I'll present it publicly, you know, to, to the, uh, board. And so then this is the HYA recruiting advantage. Again, you know, I'm not a, uh, superintendent, so I know that ninety percent of our associates are. I'm actually a board member. I've been on a school board where I'm from for fifteen years. So I've seen a lot in fifteen years. And so I know I look like a pretty nice little cuddly bear, but I know my role, and I'm very serious about this business. And so I, I want to make certain that the board understands that, and, and I want to make sure that your community is very appreciative of, of you for selecting HYA as your, uh, search firm. So again, all of the resources that we're gonna bring to bear and all of our networks will be used as a part of this search. This is, you're one of the largest orange, uh, districts in Orange County right now, and your search is actually further ahead than most. And so it, it puts us in a very good competitive space to be able to capture individuals before they go looking at any other district. We won't call any districts names, but we know who's searching out there. This is the thorough selection, uh, phase. And so using the leadership profile survey results as a guide. And I keep stressing that, we're gonna utilize what the community says, as well as what the board members state, as well as staff. Everybody has a voice and agency within this overall process. We conduct the screening of all applicants, we can have reference checks, blind reference checks, we do internet searches, and then we use other underground railroad-oriented means in order to get information. We know how to get information on, on superintendent candidates. And we want to make sure that if it's out there, we'll find it, and if it's not out there, we'll still find it, all right? Present a slate, along with supporting materials of qualified candidates. And then, of course, we'll work with the board to prepare the board for, uh, the interviews, and then facilitate the third-party background checks. Of course, again, very important that the board understand, you have to, and I'm, I'm emphatic about the background check. You have to know exactly who you're looking at, because all, as my mother would say, all that glitters is not gold, and all gold is not glitter. So we want to make sure we review, uh, these folks' backgrounds accordingly. And I'm gonna go off, off into this, I've, I've talked a lot about, uh, HYA and, and the work that we do nationally. We'll be at the, uh, Superintendent's Conference, talking to folks in San Antonio, Texas next week. There's a host of superintendents, about three thousand of them gathering. And so we'll get a chance to talk to them about this district, and if individuals are interested, that's okay. But we'll still look locally, so we're gonna look far and wide, so. Any questions? Any questions before we go on? All right, so the board members, you will get a portal. You'll have a, a private portal, so that you can watch the process as it unfolds, the five of you. I know I'm gonna be talking to Trustee Buck pretty soon. And so we'll make certain that she's been privy to this as well. And so you'll have an opportunity to know at every phase where we are. There will not be any secrets, no shell games. You're gonna know exactly what we are and what we're doing. Now, you will not probably get names. I'm not gonna give you any names. And the Bellflower search was very interesting because we didn't provide the board any names, any gender characteristics, any racial or ethnic characteristics, and we did not provide the name of the school district. So it was clearly on pedigree, aptitude, and ability. So I know Dr. Matthews knows the superintendent pretty well, but when he walked in the room, folks were rather shocked. And I enjoyed watching them be shocked. So again, and he knows where I'm going with that, but, you know, he's friends of ours. And so the reality is that we don't want, we want this process to be purely on people's ability and we, and their capacity to lead this, this system, a very large system. Any questions?
I think you covered it. I think, uh, I think we're, uh, we're pretty fa, pretty well satisfied. Appreciate your, uh, your, uh, pre, presentation. And look forward to, uh, seeing this, this all roll up. This is, this sounds like, uh, uh, one heck of a task, but, uh, it sounds like you're up to it. So I appreciate, uh, everything in what your agency is doing.
I just had one question.
Yes, ma'am.
You talked about how you're going to be engaging, um, the community, taxpayers, et cetera. What is, or what is your process? I mean, I know it's easy to talk to our teachers and our staff and to us and to our parents, but how do you engage the community?
So we're gonna work very closely with the staff. We're gonna work, we've been assigned to work with the, the board and the superintendent's executive. And so we're gonna utilize social media, as well as all of the other conduits that the district currently uses to touch parents. You may have a parent link type software, but there's a way that you would text a parent, or where you would You may have a parent link type software, but there's a way that you would text a parent or where you would email the parent. We would leverage that conduit to get right into the community. But utilizing and working very closely with your IT staff, they'll be very instrumental in helping us therein.
Okay, and then has there been a job description finalized yet for this position?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we did receive that from the HR team and of course, we're going to beef it up. And just phenomenal question, but. When superintendents or aspirants are applying, they know, they know. And if a superintendent is very interested in a job description, you will not be seeing that person. There is one that your district has and HR did provide it. But we really want people to know exactly what they're walking into, whether it's this district or any other district. You need to know what you're signing up for. And so especially as we begin to lean forward and the state talks about budget deficits and ESER funds are. Are, you know, being reduced as a result of a spend-down plan and looking at all of the other challenges that a district has to endure. Superintendent needs to know what's going on, so, but we do have the job description.
Okay, because I was just curious with the advertising, like what month will these, in all the different periodicals, will they appear?
Yeah, so on the, the activity.
Because it's, it says, well, what I was most concerned about is the applications closing on March 1st. And I'm like, so are these, I guess, are we already advertising at this time in those? On, you know, the, you know, on Edsource and the, the giant newspaper we get from the superintendents and CSBA. Yeah, all those wonderful things.
Those were all, it'll all happen simultaneously. Everything is on our website, so our website is exceedingly elaborate. And as a matter of fact, every single superintendent's search, we're able to promulgate throughout the country. So, our website alone draws a tremendous amount of enthusiasm from everybody because we've been in it for so long. So, irrespective of placing it in AXA or any other organization, it's already on the street. The job description hit the street February 1st.
Okay, that's what I was making sure.
Once the board authorized the staff to begin executing an agreement, we began moving very expeditiously to promulgate throughout the country. The other periodicals or the other advertisements is just simply an additional overlay. Now, in this particular aspect of how searches operate, you can do all of that, but here's what happens. The real serious candidates, they're always going to apply toward the end because it gives them an opportunity to put together their packets. Normally, your best candidates don't apply day one. A month is enough time for a serious superintendent aspirant to get their letters in order, begin developing their resume. And let's just be candid, you know, I really wouldn't bring someone to you to consider that's not a seated superintendent. Because there's no way an assistant or an associate is going to hold this job down. And let's be very, very candid here, no way. You need to understand how to work with boards and understand all the challenges that are before you. And so phenomenal question, Trustee Anderson, but the serious people, they know that this job is out there. Because everyone knew when Dr. Matthews' predecessor left, that he only had a one-year contract. None of this is a secret. They knew he came in for a one-year contract and that the job would become available. So, people are eager.
Thank you for asking my questions.
Thank you much, ma'am. Any additional questions?
Is, is March 1st a hard close? I think, because that's what she was asking about the closing of applications.
Sir, you're the boss, it's whatever you say.
Okay, all right.
The board says March 1st. Now, understand something now, we can keep it open, but remember, if we keep it open, then we have to shorten one of the other phases. Either way it goes, you have an interim superintendent whose contract expires. Should the board elect to extend, that's different. Now, I would be very honest and say. The longer you extend it, the longer you delay, then other people will move on to different searches. Because there are so many searches that are underway, not just in California, but also throughout the country. Any additional questions?
I would just like to thank you for coming tonight and we're looking forward to this search and we're looking forward to all of your knowledge that HYA has given us so far. And it's a, I think this is one of the best decisions we've made as a board this year, so thank you so much.
Thank you very kindly.
Okay, moving on. We are up for our student board report. I'd like to go ahead and pass this on to Trustee Bang.
Good evening, President Youngblood, trustees, Superintendent Dr. Matthews and executive cabinet members. I am honored to be here tonight to share recent happenings from our comprehensive high schools and alternative campuses. From Buena Vista Virtual Academy, 12 middle school students and two teachers have recently attended Emerald Cove Outdoor Science Institute. They played in the snow, built survival shelters, took geology hikes, saw animal tracks and had a wonderful time making friends and lifelong memories. Buena Vista Virtual Academy would like to thank the PYLUSD Board of Education for providing funds to their school in order to make amazing opportunities like this available to students. El Camino Real High School has started off its second semester with a new schedule. They have a seventh period called Edge, which is designed for students to catch up on work or complete assignments to earn more credit in their classes. El Camino Real High School students in Language Arts will be going to the La Mirada Theater to see a live performance of The Outsiders. At Eldorado High School, the mock trial team competed in the Orange County Mock Trial Finals this weekend. The county championships were held on Monday, January 30th and Wednesday, February 1st. The prosecution team competed Monday and the defense team on Wednesday at the Central Justice Center in Santa Ana against the Orange County School of Arts. In the end, the team lost by a five-point difference, but not without a great display of hard work, gamesmanship and excellence from all students. Way to go Eldorado High School. Esperanza High School is proud of their winter sports team. Both men's and women's soccer, basketball and wrestling are heading to CIFs starting this week. The Aztecs are in the middle of their annual Clash of Classes Week. The school will celebrate the competition and its entire student body on February, on Friday, February 10th with a pep rally to crown the winning class. At George Key and Adventure Academy, George Key School teacher Biddle Spash was named one of the teachers, district's teachers of the year. According to Principal Rebecca Allen, Kim is known by all who work, who work with her as being kind, caring, creative and resourceful. Venture Academy is currently conducting a Valentine's fundraiser for their choir. Proceeds will be used to purchase music holders for the students to utilize while practicing and performing. At Parkview School, Parkview is presenting Beauty and the Beast at the PYLUSD Performing Arts Center on February 10th at 7:00 PM and February 11th at 2:00 and 6:00 PM. The performance will feature students of all ages in transitional kindergarten through 12th grade. Students have been working hard since October to prepare for the stage. At Valencia High School, on February 12, or on February 2nd, Valencia's ASB Program's Tie Gears Robotics Team and Cyber Patriot. And Cyber Patriot Cyber Security Competition Team were invited to demonstrate engineering and computer science at Golden Elementary School's annual science night. Notably, all Valencia varsity wrestlers won their white class during the Empire League Championship on February 3rd and February 4th. Lastly, at Yorblinda High School, Yorblinda High School Red Cross Club hosted a blood drive on February 2nd with a successful turnout. The Mustangs collected enough blood to potentially save 183 lives. Eight students participated in National Singing Day with, or National Signing Day with students planning on playing various sports at Hawaii Pacific University, the University of California, Santa Barbara. Claremont McKenna College, the University of Chicago, California Baptist University, St. Mary's College of California, UCLA and Biola University. Early, oh, early in the month of February, Yorblinda High School will host their annual Olympics Week and Rally. This is a beloved tradition at Yorblinda High School with all students and faculty getting involved in the school-wide competition. That is all.
Nice, excellent. So, so Mr. Bang, real quick question for you. How has Valencia High School and the district prepared you for life beyond high school?
I think especially at Valencia High School, what I've had in my experience is just great teachers. All four years of high school and you saw Mrs. Mukuba here today, but really all four years of high school has really just been a great teacher in every subject. And they've really driven my worth ethic and gotten me like passionate in these different subjects, notably, like notably STEM courses. And so I think really just sharpening my work, my work ethic and passion for learning is, is what Valencia has taught me.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so with that said, this brings us to our superintendent's report. Is that the correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just want to check. Dr. Matthews?
Thank you and good evening again, President Youngblood, trustees and executive cabinet members. We have joined educational organizations across the country to celebrate National School Counseling Week this week, February 6th through 10th. It's no secret that students, staff, families have all come to rely on our school counselors and wellness specialists for support and guidance beyond their regularly assigned duties. These professionals offer expertise to students as they navigate their education, ensure they are prepared for the next step on their academic journey. Address a wide variety of unique challenges on campuses, share timely information with our school communities and so much more. We appreciate their diligent work supporting the emotional health, safety and well-being of all of our PYLUSD students and it's more crucial now than ever. So, help us extend our thanks to our dedicated and caring counselors and wellness specialists across all of our campuses this week and beyond. I want to echo Preston's comments about the Eldorado Mock Trial Team. They had a phenomenal experience in the Orange County Mock Trial Championship. They were in the Central Justice Center in Santa Ana for the competition. And like you said, it came down to just five points. They narrowly lost that, but it was their second time in four years to advance to the finals and they actually won it all in 2019. What's, what's very impressive to me is their true record of excellence. This is their 13th appearance in the championship round, the most of any school in the 40-year history of the program. We and all the Golden Hawks are proud of their efforts and their continued excellence in their performance. Also at Eldorado, I want to congratulate their cheer team, who recently earned the title of CIF Southern Section Champion. They had a traditional competitive cheer championships on Saturday, January 21st at Martin Luther King High School in Riverside. Under the direction of Coach Riley Bragg, they won the Division One Double-A Championship. They also won this championship three years ago when their current team seniors were freshmen, so pretty cool. They have two rings as seniors. Way to go Golden Hawks. And I think you all appreciated our tradition of recognizing someone at our board meetings. And so this is part of our PYLUSD advantage. It creates an engaged community and we love it. I appreciate all the enthusiasm for it, so I hope that we can make that a tradition for every board meeting from now on. Do those recognitions and because as you can see here, there's a lot to celebrate in PYLUSD. I like it, we have support. I want to talk about our Founder's Dinner on February 1st. We, executive cabinet members and board members had the pleasure of attending the PTA Founder's Day Dinner hosted by the PYLUC's Association of PTAs. This is 126 years since PTA was formed in an effort to improve the lives of children and families. Founder's Day celebrates the legacy and work of the organization's founders, Alice McClellan Bernie, Phoebe Apperson Hurst and Selina Sloan Butler. It was great to hear from the leaders of the PYLUC, including President Micah Sernike, who all worked tirelessly to support our individual school PTAs by advocating for our students and our schools. Another advocate for us is our Reach Foundation and they recently announced their annual sham rock and run 5K and 2K events, which will be taking place on, on March 19th at Yorba Regional Park in Anaheim. I think one of the first meetings I watched, you talked about you running in that event, board member Blades, if I recall. Yeah. I better get after it, okay? But proceeds from the event directly benefit our middle school track meet and other programs hosted by the Reach Foundation, which is an all-volunteer, education-focused, 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that solely benefits our students across the district. More information about the event and a link to register are on our website. Last week, we announced our Employees of the Year for the 2022-23 school year. We announced eight employees, all of whom were nominated by one or more of their colleagues and detailed their outstanding contributions they provided to districts that go and how they go above and beyond. The nominating individual described how the candidate demonstrates the district's core values. So, our Teachers of the Year were Michelle Wannaravitz from Golden, Kim Biddlespah from Golden Key, from George Key, excuse me, and Eric Plunkett from Travis Ranch. Our classified employees, yeah, thank you, we got more, but please applaud, they deserve it. Our Classified Employees of the Year are Karen Walcutt, a Registered Behavior Technician from Wagner, Steve Rodriguez, a beloved plant coordinator from Kramer and Lynda Gaunt, Secretary from Valencia. And our Manager of the Year, Kathleen Escaleras-Nappi, Principal from Rose Drive and, yep. And Richard Jimenez, Director from Transportation Department. And I have to say, going around in a, in a van from school to school, each school had, a department had arranged a surprise for their person. They were all surprised by it. It was one of the most special experiences I've had in my 38 years where, because not only were the employees surprised, but their, their colleagues were so genuinely supportive of who they are. And you could feel the love in this community. I told you, this is a special place. And the appreciation employees have for each other here is, I've never seen anything quite like it. And so it was an honor to be a part of that going there. And I, I'm going to close with a really difficult time for our school community. I think as many are aware, our counselor at Bernardo Yorba Middle School, Stacy Callaway, recently passed away. As a result of an accidental head injury. Stacy served as a valued and beloved part of our PYLUSD committee for six years and she's also an alumna of PYLUSD. On top of that, she was one of our Employees of the Year we were supposed to recognize. We were planning, we were planning for her to recover and come back and so it's. It was, it's tragic that that happened and executive, and so several of Stacy's colleagues nominated her for this honor. I think the nominations give us some things that we can say about her. She was regarded as a hero, that was the word people used about her, a hero on the Bernardo campus and beyond. For the matadors, she handled so much, academic intervention and support, community referrals. She checked in with students, she resolved conflicts, she provided crisis support, behavioral support and consultation, custom requests, she was a favorite. One colleague shared, to say Stacy demonstrates each of the core values is an understatement. From making students feel safe to holding them to fort when unexpected needs arose, Stacy embodied excellence each and every day. Her loss is tragic and is being felt by so many in this community and we're struggling to find adequate words to convey the heartbreak that we have. We were at the various sites that were impacted by this crisis on Monday and it was a hard day. I commend our employees who, who were there for each other. I commend our employees who were there for their students. I commend our families who found ways to support the school in this very difficult time. And again, it was a community rallying together in an extraordinarily difficult time. So, I ask you send strength to the entire Bernardo Yorba family, to the Callaway family and to our entire community. We will be closing the meeting in her honor tonight and so I look forward, it's a, it's a small thing, but I think every way we honor a person's memory like this is very powerful. So, I appreciate President Youngblood with that idea there this evening, so thank you and that concludes my report for the evening.
All right, thank you, sir. Let's see, did we have a change in? Okay, so we are kind of leapfrogging over the public comment, we'll come back to that. But we're going to go right into our communication and board report. So, at this time, Ms. Anderson, if you would.
First, I just would like to take a moment to congratulate all the students. There's been so many victories for students in the last month since our meeting and I'm just so proud of all of them. And also to congratulate all of our staff that were just recently awarded Employees of the Year. So, thank you guys so much for all your hard work and congratulations, well deserved. I had a couple of school visits. Since our last meeting and one of them was the Parkview homeschooling and I really learned a lot about our homeschool program here and how it works and how it benefits the students and the families. how it benefits the students and the families that are involved. And we currently have about 200 families. And part of the process, which I didn't realize, was preparing students to be the main teachers for their children. And so they do a lot of training for parents and examples, is teaching parents about phonics, reading fundamentals, teaching them how to use our new science curriculum, and much more. And they also have monthly meetings with the parents to review, you know, last month's assignments and to prep them for the next months. And they have concurrent enrollment with Community College, so kids can also earn college credits. And a lot of great enrichment opportunities, which Mr. Bang highlighted their play coming up, and sad I'm not going to miss it because I'm going to be out of town. But I think my favorite part of my visit there was watching the students build and program their robots, which are going to be entering a sumo wrestling match. And I hope I get an invite back to come watch their robots work. That will be very exciting. I also went to Buena Vista Virtual Academy, and they too were working with robots. Those were, they were working with Ozobots, and it was just really fun to watch the kids, you know, program their bots using math, prediction, and other problem-solving tools. I learned about their student population and why the academy is, is so important to certain needs in our community, and I'm just grateful that we offer, offer lots of opportunities. And I learned a little bit about their hybrid program that they're trying to get in and tutoring. And also, while I was there, I got to walk over to the Alternative to Suspensions Program, which is just located in the building next. And, and it was just really eye-opening to me. I didn't realize how vast that program was and how many compute, community partners come in and participate and help these students and educate them from Orange County Department of Health to the Orange County Sheriff's Department. And it was really a good experience for me to learn more about them. I attended a couple of meetings. One of them was the Capital Advisors Budget Perspective Workshop, and so I'll just share a few highlights and some lowlights. A highlight is the COLA for next year. Looks like it's going to be 8.13% for ADA, Special Education, Nutrition and Transportation, which is always a good thing. And there's going to be continuing funding for ELOP and Universal TK Arts and Music Initiatives through Prop 28. Some of the lowlights are $30 billion less for education next year, and a decrease in the Arts and Music Discretionary Block Grant, and no pension relief really so far in the budget. But we're still early, and I'm sure there'll be lots of advocacy taking place. Also went to the Edsource, I listened into a Zoom meeting on Edsource Roundtable, and it was titled, "What Parents and Teachers Can Do to Get Their State's Youngest Students Reading by Third Grade." And it was really informative. They had parents on there, teachers, educators. One of the things I thought was really interesting is one of the panelists was a parent, and they trained this, they had a whole, in this district, they had a whole group of parents that were trained in SIPs, which is systematic instruction in phonics awareness, phonics and sight work, sight words. And I probably screwed that up. Dr. Addison can straighten me out later. And I just thought it was an interesting way of how they could utilize parents. And also, you know, they covered topics for advocacy for parents, like what a parent can do when they feel like their child is not quite meeting up. What are the best approaches with the teacher and how to address that? And what they could do at home, increasing language, introducing new vocabulary, et cetera. And, and another thing they talked about was how some colleges and universities' teachings programs are kind of lagging behind in updating their teaching, reading programs. They're not teaching fundamental skills in reading. And so that was a kind of a topic of discussion, like how, how could they get that happening quicker, and what they could do in Sacramento to promote that. I attended the LCAP Community Meeting over Zoom, and I loved learning more about our strengths and our weaknesses, and kind of getting a preview of some of the actions that our district is going to take, and I know we're going to discuss that later. I attended the Unity Dance at Yorba Linda Middle School, and it was such an amazing experience. They had sensory toys, balloon artists, face painting, bowling, cornhole, and of course, dancing. And, and music was provided by DJ Jaiman, and I got to see my neighbor in the middle of the dance floor having a wonderful time. So it was very fun. I also attended the PTA Founder's Dinner and enjoyed celebrating with them. And I just want to thank all the amazing PTA volunteers out there who work so tirelessly for our children and make such a big difference in our schools. And I just think, you know, it's just such a vital importance now, you know, that coming together as a community to help and lift our students. So, thank you to them. Also, one other thing, in Resolution 2205 Red Ribbon Week, we, that we approved in October, the Board of Education, it states, "The Board of Education encourages students, parents, and staff to educate themselves on current drug trends," drug trends, excuse me. And I'm really proud of our nursing staff leading the way to train over 250 staff members in how to administer Narcan in the response to an opioid overdose on campus by placing Narcan at each school site. And once personnel has been trained. And I happened to run into Michelle De Haven last week. On one of the campuses, she was delivering Narcan to the site, and I got to be a sideline to her discussion with the principal about who else on the campus could be trained and what they could do to make this work for their staff. And I just, just through listening to this conversation, you realize what a huge undertaking that they've taken on and making sure that each school is fully covered. And I'm just so grateful for all the nurses involved that have done so much work to do this. And, and hopefully, later in this meeting, we will be approving this Board of Supervisors Grant for $20,000 to help purchase Narcan and have it readily available if needed. And also, I look maybe forward to hearing how we are educating our students maybe in an update against the dangers of fentanyl, you know, as it can be disguised to look like candy, marijuana, put in pills that resemble other prescription opioids. And so what we can do to really help our students, especially in some of the younger ages, because it's just so there. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. Fentanyl is vicious. It's, it definitely takes no prisoners. It's one of those drugs that you do one time, and that could be the end of it. So I'd love more education on those types of drugs, for sure. Thank you. Mr. Fraser?
All right. It was mentioned earlier about the success of athletics at our schools across the district, especially at Esperanza, where we've got almost every winter sports going to CIF. Something specifically that I was able to, I had the honor of attending was both the boys' and girls' varsity basketball were league champions together. And we did a net-cutting ceremony in the gym to commemorate that. And it just, I think it goes to show what happens when you get a group of students together that are willing to work towards a common goal. Something else that I find very interesting, especially about our girls, there is a combined GPA on that basketball team at Esperanza that is approaching 4.0 for almost every player. Who, and they've gone to Hawaii for a weeks-long tournament. They were gone all spring break down in Elsinore on a tournament, and they all completed finals. I mean, the amount of dedication, effort, just like we see with the teachers that are being recognized, we have students that are willing to do the work even though they are stretched to the breaking point, yet they're able to, they're able to succeed. And I think it just is such a testament to how students can be motivated to actually succeed in the classroom. In so many areas where we're having issues, we need to find motivations for more students to be able to actually succeed. And I just think it's phenomenal to see those two groups, especially in the sports world, to actually excel and be ahead of their class. So that was just phenomenal to be a part of. The, the Literary Review Committee commenced and had a meeting over since our last meeting, and I've been talking with several parents about how that works, and I got a flow chart. And there's things that I'm learning about the policies of how things are done here at the district that seem a little bit backwards. There's some steps that feel like they're circumventing things that are in place that we need to change. There were things within that, the flow chart of how that process worked that I think could be, we can have some efficiencies that make things better. We're relying a lot on parents to do research that could be shortened for them, but we do want parents involved. There's so many things I see related to policies in the district that I'm, I'm wanting to put in place, and especially as we look for a superintendent, somebody that's well-versed in how policy is supposed to be followed. And that is something that I look forward to with Mr. Ali and the search team, to find somebody that's going to be able to implement that in a way that is the best for our district, because we can find the best person for the job. And then finally, as many of you know, we get a lot of emails, a lot of emails. Some are great, some are problems. A lot of it is just keeping us informed with what's going on. There was a couple of emails that were related to some things at our campuses that I think need to be addressed directly. So there's, there's specifically, there's a potential issue with some of the doors at George Key that seem like it's a very simple fix. So I'm going to be investigating that and dealing with Dr. Matthews and, and everybody else involved to make sure that we can have the best opportunity for all of our students that allows them to succeed. So again, I'm, I've said it every meeting so far, but it's all about the kids. It's all about their success in the classroom and out of the classroom. And I'm just, I'm looking forward to the months and years ahead. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and jump over Trustee Blades, because I can be a little long-winded. Just kidding. Okay, so in my board report, one of the things that I met with Mr. Ali through his organization, and he was giving me some, some, some tidbits of knowledge in order to look for the appropriate superintendent, what some of those characteristics might be like, or some of the qualities that, you know, I would like to see. And I believe that our mission statement kind of, kind of encompasses that. And our mission statement, if, if you don't know, is to inspire all students through rigorous and relevant educational experiences that empower them to become responsible, ethical, and contributing citizens. I felt that was probably one of the, the best things in which I could provide him. So as you folks heard tonight, he's, he's put together a whole form, formula in order to do so. So I'm looking forward to that. Also, got to, to kind of sit in on the Governor, Governor's Budget Meeting. Boy, I tell you, let's just say, I'm not going to go over it tonight because you're going to get some of that information, but there were a lot of numbers involved, and definitely I had a headache at the end of that one. So you can listen to that information here momentarily. Also had a phone interview with our new legal counsel of OHH. I talked to Dave Huff, and he was kind of reconfirming the transition phase that we move away from Atkinson and the, the things in which they're involved in, and how they would go ahead and pass that baton in, in all, all areas, including Special Education, Human Resources, and also Professional Development. So I'm looking forward to that. I know that they're going to be, they're going to conduct a very conducive and focused relationship with the Board and the District. Next, I also sat in on the Parent LCAP, in which Dr. Matthews had put together on a Zoom session, and it was, it was pretty informative. Very, very amazing session that gave a look at what the goals were for this LCAP, or this Local Control Accountability Plan. It talked, everything about what the district is going to implement, the actions and the services in which they're going to provide, and including expenditures. So I'm really excited to start working on that next month. So there are areas, parents, if you have concerns, you want to see, you know, more money diverted to, say, reading programs, then please let us know so we can really take some focus and, and start doing that. And also, I got to finish the, I completed the Leadership Training through CLEO. I think last, last month I told you CLEO was the California Local Elected Officials portion. And they had about 15 modules that dealt with topics including powers, duties, and authorities for local elected officials, also transparency and accountability issues. Even Janus Rights were involved in there, as well as public safety issues. It was very informative, and I appreciate understanding all that information a little better. It's, it's, it's a lot to take in, but it's good. Lastly, I'll be attending a CPC, which is a California Policy Center Conference. This is a two-day conference that's being held in Sacramento. It's the Policy Center's Second Annual Parent Union Legislative Summit, and it's entitled, "Parents Not Partisans." And it will also conclude at the, on day two at the steps at the State Capitol. So I'm really looking forward to that. It's going to be pretty, pretty amazing stuff. So that'll conclude my board report, and back to Trustee Blades.
Thank you, President Youngblood. First of all, I think you did forget something. We both visited Valletta's Middle School a couple of weeks ago to hear guest speaker Keith Hawkins. He brought a powerful message to the students and the staff. He was extremely well-received, and I believe he left an impact on all of our students and our staff as well. Left an impact on myself and also Sean Youngblood, even though I forgot. I visited, well, first of all, before I forget, Mark Myers, who is our Esperanza Choir Director, he was here last meeting, and he was asking about our Prop 28 funding and what our plan is. And so I was curious if we had started getting that plan together and what that looked like. One thing I really wanted to hit on, and I'm trying to be quick because I have a special, I have some special guests outside in the hallway that are going to be coming in and giving us quite a show. So I'm gonna, I have this all written down. I'm going to try to stay on, on point tonight. I visited Travis Ranch, and I came away with two items of utmost important, utmost importance that needs to be addressed immediately. One, the elementary schoolrooms at Travis Ranch are large rooms that are divided into sections. For example, all four fourth-grade classes are in one large room. I was shocked when I went in there, and I saw that there was makeshift barriers that did little to separate each classroom. So imagine 120 students in one room like this with some makeshift barriers and having four teachers teach all, teach class at one time. I felt like this was something that if your student, you know, can't focus, has ADD, if something like this is happening, I couldn't focus as I was standing in the room because I had one teacher here with one class, one teacher there, one teacher there, and one teacher here. And so while I'm trying to focus on what this teacher says, there's something going on behind me. And I walked around the campus, and the whole elementary school is like that. And I thought, we talk about equity in education all the time. Where is the educational equity at Travis Ranch Elementary School? I asked the students. The students complained it was loud, it was hard to concentrate. They were easily distracted. And you know what? I, I was living it with them, just in the, you know, the five minutes that I was in each room. I walked into the first-grade classroom, and there was, again, the same setup, and then we had a and then we had a teacher playing a very loud video right here. And I'm sitting here thinking, how do these kids learn? And so is this fair to our Travis Ranch Elementary School students that this is what they're subject to every day? Is this fair that they are put 120, 130, 140 kids in one large room, and our teachers are expected to teach that way? I just don't think it is fair and equitable, and I'm asking that the board supports this, that we do something immediately to help those kids have a better learning environment at Travis Ranch. I also have questioned at Travis Ranch why they have one principal for elementary and middle school. That it's one campus, they're all combined, and there's one principal and two assistant principals. There is no model like this in the rest of the district. And so after talking with staff, after talking with principal, after talking with the community, I would like to ask, so we put on our LCAP, that we get one additional principal position at Travis Ranch. So we can have one principal for middle school, and we can have one principal for elementary still, because once again, we need to make that equitable for our staff at Travis Ranch. I visited Glen Knoll Elementary, where I was able to tour the school, and I also visited Mrs. Finney's class, where I was able to participate in a CGI lesson. CGI is not a new concept. It is actually a concept from 30 years ago. I recognized it from when I was a student. And Mrs. Finney's class was just an amazing group. Mrs. Finney's a passionate teacher. Her kids just love her. I loved being in her classroom. I'm so excited when I can go back in a couple of weeks. And I also am proud to say that her third graders attempted to stump me, and I am smarter than a third grader still. So that was, that was very, I was very happy about that. As we work together, I also want to share that as a board member, I'm trying to build a bridge with our union. I've extended invites to many union members, including the president. Our teachers are the most influential factors for students' learning. I want to shift our focus from being in a position to dispel rumors that unit members approach me to ask for clarification, like whether our search firm for the superintendent is vetted, or sharing that we've been directed not to speak with members of the board. Since the question was posed to me about the validity of our search firm, and I just want to thank Mr. Ali for the thorough presentation, I don't think that there is any room for anyone to say that this search firm is not thoroughly vetted and absolutely on the up and up. I reached out to Linda Mannion to sit down and have an honest discussion, since I've actually never once spoken with her. We really should be working together, or the union should at least be making consistent statements to union members. I'm still looking forward to hearing back from Linda for a meeting date. It's also been told to me that APLA members, that if teachers violate the CRT ban, the board is looking to fire. That is absolutely not true, as we've directed that any violation of the CRT ban, discipline is held in the same manner per usual. I am expecting that HR is validating this when asked. It was also revealed last board meeting that PYLUSD is in contract with over 25 colleges and universities for students and counselors. When Cal State University Fullerton removed their student teachers, the district failed to publish and speak about the 25 existing colleges and universities who are still in contract with PYLUSD. I'm asking that in the future, when the board is taking a lot of heat, and there's a lot of outside noise coming in, that the district is forthcoming and provides the information to outside sources, media, and to our community. Something like this, knowing that Cal State Fullerton, one college, pulls out because of a critical race theory ban, but we have 25 additional universities that have remained in contract with us, is a huge statement, and would have been a huge statement at the time. Still is a huge statement. Many teachers have reached out to me from multiple sites about our AR reading program. They have been told by the district that the board removed this program. I am here to tell you, I've inquired about this, and that the board did not remove this program. Our ed services removed the program. I attempted to put this back onto our agenda, since so many teachers throughout our district have asked that this program return, because they believe that it really helped their students learn how to read. And so I'm requesting that our AR program, once again, be placed on the marked agenda, because I believe teachers think this is a valuable tool for our students when it comes to reading. Even if every school doesn't want to utilize this program, that's fine. But I think we should give teachers access to this program, because right now, our reading scores are not high. And if a teacher thinks that this will help their kids, then we should give them every tool available possible. I don't think we should have a one-size-fits-all approach in our district. Trustee Frazier hit on the new literary process that was enacted. I kind of agreed the same way. I didn't even know it was enacted. I was sitting at home, and my phone, I got a phone call and a couple of text messages asking me about the new literary process, and I had no idea what they were talking about. And so I would, I looked at it the same as Trustee Frazier did, and I thought that there was things on there that I wouldn't have wanted to be that way, and we really had no input. So I'm asking that we maybe stop what the process is, or at least we circle back, and we are able to have, as a board, some input. Because as you know, everything gets blamed on the board. So if this process isn't, you know, if this process starts to go through and it bombs, it's going to be blamed on the board, and we really had nothing to do with it. Capistrano Valley reached out to them, and they redid their literary process, and it was a three-to-five-month process with board input and, you know, working together with the district. And so tonight also, I am also going to bring forth an idea to begin serving our community and students in a new way. Right now, our students have access to gain college credits from Fullerton College, but I'm suggesting is that we take this to a higher level. I suggest that we go a step further and implement an early-middle college. The first middle college opened in 1974 at Laguardia Community College in New York with a strong belief that students from socially-economically disadvantaged backgrounds, students who were traditionally high school dropouts, could succeed if provided a unit, or opportunity to pursue college and high school in a small nurturing environment that was on a community college campus. The result of the program was the dropout rate decreased, attendance and passing course rates increased, graduation rates exceeded 80%, and college rates, or college attendance rates soared to more than 85%. There are several early and middle colleges in the state of California, LAUSD, Middle College High School at LA Southwest College, and Harbor Teacher Preparation Academy at LA Harbor College. These schools are traditionally small, serving between 150 to 500 students, and primarily located on or near a community college campus, with a formal partnership between a K-12 district and a community college. The goal for a middle, early college, high school is for students to graduate with 30 to 60 college transferable units, or an AA degree, along with a high school diploma. Target audiences can include students who are first-in family to attend college, students of ethnicity who are underrepresented at four-year institutions, and socially-economically disadvantaged. An early-middle college provides numerous benefits to districts, students, parents, and the community. We cannot continue to only talk about the ideas of how to serve our community. We need to start taking action. This would be a game changer for many students in our district, and imagine the lives that we can change. I'm looking forward to talking with Fullerton College. I'm looking forward to talking to Compton Community College. I'm looking forward to talking to other various schools and colleges to see how we can get this program in action, and if we can be a game changer here in Orange County. And finally, I would like to introduce the nonprofit Rhythm-O, also called Mariachi Kids. While we continue to talk about community and exploring different cultures, I believe the possible addition of this group into our schools can be invaluable to our community. This is another example about how we start talking and actually start doing the work. Rhythm-O is currently serving in the Anaheim School District. I've asked them to come out tonight and give us a small taste of what they can offer our school district. Even if we do not use them in our schools, or we do not contract with them, I hope that our parents and our community know that they are located in Anaheim, and any student can join and take lessons. Mariachi programs have started in several local colleges, and I believe the addition of Mariachi into our schools will only broaden our students' horizons. So once again, I present Rhythm-O, or Mariachi Kids. Oliver, I have a quick question. If you were to come into our schools, like you've gone into Anaheim, what would that look like? I understand that there's not much at the elementary level, or there is, but you're really for junior high and high schools, where you guys excel.
We would have up to three instructors, both the guitars and the violins as specialists in those groups. And we would go over the material, split into our sectionals, and then gather back together again, and play together.
Awesome. And so what is your website? So if our district doesn't decide to go with you, but at least our families at home would know if they're interested in Mariachi, they know where to find you. Thank you very much.
We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We serve Anaheim, creating instruments of hope into the hands of our children since 1996.
Thank you so much. Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Wow, that was great. All right. Okay, so this leads us to public comment. So a public comment is the opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During public comment, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. Tonight, we have 13 people wishing to speak, so each speaker will be given two minutes of speaking time. As speakers, I will have speakers. When you come up, please recite your name, just repeat your name. So I'm going to call up the first four, and if you guys will sit in the front rows and be ready for your time. So number one, that's Jeannie Paket, Janet Chang, Andy Falco, and Sharon G. Come on up.
Sorry for my crazy poster here. Okay, my name is Jeannie Paket, and I'd like to speak on behalf of the 500-plus people who signed my petition to change the calendar and start school in mid-August. Obviously, there are many parents and teachers who don't want this change, mainly because of summer vacation preferences. And I get it. Parents are naturally going to seek what's best for their own family life and children. There are so many different opinions about when and how kids should be spending their summer vacation because of different family cultures and parenting styles. So it seems that our district would rather not stir the pot at all, and has been paralyzed by indecision, because there are too many who are like, "Don't touch my vacation." But I want to remind the board and our leaders that your job is to make decisions in the best interest of education, athletics, and that which involves the surrounding community, all that falls within the scope of PYL. Stick to the mission and vision of the PYLUSD Advantage Plan. That is your roadmap. It's not your main concern that kids might be kept from more warm days at the beach or family vacation plans are inconvenienced. Your concern should be to quote-unquote, "ensure that our students experience the advantage of an outstanding education." Well, our late start has become a disadvantage. Let's focus on the educational advantages of starting school in mid-August. Number one, our AP IB students need the two extra weeks before exams. The teachers are amazing, and students are hard-working, so despite the fast pace, or the fact that they are learning material all the way up to exam day, they are still able to pull off record-passing rates in IB diplomas awarded. But don't be deceived. Students feel incredible pressure. The district should support them by alleviating some of this pressure and giving them more time. It's the least you can do for these high-achieving students who boost the district's reputation and make it attractive. My friend Janet Chang will continue.
Number two, an earlier start day means less wasted instructional time. One PYL mom told me, everyone knows the first week of school is in real school. How can real instruction begin when the first three days of school are interrupted by a Labor Day weekend? Also, after AP and IB exams are done, there are still four to six weeks of school left, which are often filled up with watching videos and maybe doing fun projects, but are less beneficial than a chance to focus on the material for the exams. Number three, shifting our school calendar would mean that our students have more opportunities to take summer classes at Fullerton College and other community colleges. Last year, summer classes at Fullerton began on June 6. Santiago Canyon College starts on June 12. As the cost of college has soared, community college has become an increasingly popular choice for many students, and they should have the choice to be able to enroll for the summer. Number four, it makes sense to end the semester before winter break and let the students take their finals with the material still fresh in their minds. Thank you. This way, they can also really enjoy their winter break. Next, regarding athletics, an earlier start works better for sports, too, especially football. Our high schools have two-season games before school even started. Lining up our schedule with other schools in our inter-district leagues makes the most sense when it comes to competition and fairness. And finally, we should move the school year earlier to be a better community partner. PYL families have close ties to Brea, Fullerton, Anaheim Hills, and Orange. By having a distinct school calendar, we make it difficult for community groups that serve students from different districts, such as the Scouts, church groups, club sports, and others. In conclusion, I encourage you, the board, to maintain your focus on making decisions to prioritize students and all that encompasses their education. Please implement this change, beginning with the 24-25 school year, to better equip students to succeed in school and school-related activities. It will take one painful summer, but every other district has done it and survived. The decision to start school earlier will give PYL students the advantage. Thank you.
Going through my children's brains, after I pick them up after school, is like going through their backpacks. Sure, there are a few useful things, like pencils, pens, notebooks, and occasional relevant handout. But then there is nonsense and trash that has no business being in their backpack and definitely not in their brain. As you know, I have kids at Golden As you know, I have kids at Golden, Toffrey, and Eldorado, and like many of you, I ask, "What happened at school today?" I get statements like, "I learned from the history teacher that our country is racist." And, "Dad, did you know that our country hates women?" This was just three weeks ago. Or they show me their phones with pictures of pride flags and boys' urinals and pride flags on teachers' desks. And then when I check their phones, I see texts about boys or girls who nearly overdosed in the bathrooms at Eldorado. On top of that, we have some teachers that simply don't teach. Instead, they fudge the grades and numbers. My son in Eldorado used to have a teacher just weeks ago, who has been there since the school was built, I believe. In a recent test, nearly all the students failed the test. The teacher did not reflect on how she could do a better job teaching or even take the time to re-educate the lesson. Instead, she reduced the grading curve so that all the kids who had failed now magically passed. We need to make sure, we need to make some changes, some serious changes, and we need to do it fast. There's no doubt the first thing that needs to change is we need to rid the district of the teachers' union's influence on education. Here's what was said in the Orange County Register in an article just two days ago. "In California, teachers' unions like the Orange Unified Education Association are the best organized, most militant, and wealthiest players in school elections. They use money they collect from member dues to finance the campaigns of candidates who once in office raised teachers' pay benefits without regard for student outcomes and expand the union's power over classrooms and local politics for what, for that reason, the head of the Los Angeles Teachers' Union famously bragged about his group, 'We elect our own bosses.'" The teachers' union should not have a say in our children's education or in regard to who we hire as superintendents or any other faculty in our district.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to address the board about some problems that we're having in our bathrooms in the high schools and as well as in our middle schools. Last week, my son and his friend had a situation at Yorbalinda Middle School where they needed to use a bathroom in between classes, and they only get three minutes of pass time, so it's like a mad rush to dash to the bathroom. And when they went in there, someone was smoking pot, so of course, the boys got freaked out and they left, and then they just had to hold it. There was no time to look for another restroom. There was also a time when my son said there were some nefarious things going on in the restroom, and he turned around and walked out, which is what I've instructed him to do. If there's drugs or anything weird going on in there, you turn around and walk out, and you find a different bathroom. But of course, in between classes, there's no time to go and hunt down a different bathroom. In light of the issues that we've had with this, with kids in the bathroom smoking pot, smoking cigarettes, vaping, among other things, I'm wondering if we can look at installing smoke detectors. And I'm not an expertise in vaping, so I don't know if smoke detectors would also catch any vaping activity or not, but if, I know I've talked to a couple other people that have kids in different districts, and they do have smoke detectors in the bathrooms and in the locker rooms. And so I'm wondering why we don't have these and if we can possibly look into getting these as a solution to at least cut down on, hopefully, the cigarette smoking and the pot smoking that's going on. So thank you for your time.
Up next, Linda Mannion, Sarah Phillips, Ryan Stowles, and Shanny Murray. Linda, you're up first.
Good evening, and I was excited to see kids here again. For 15 years, I've been coming to board meetings, and we've had kids every time except for the last couple of years. And we had our student, honor students, we had our football team, we had the kindergarten art show winner, we had everybody. Every meeting was about kids, and I loved it. It was exciting, it was energizing, and it's really what we're here for, our kids. Mrs. Blade, thank you for reaching out to me. We did provide a date for you, and unfortunately, we couldn't able to connect, but we are looking forward to meeting with you. We absolutely believe in collaboration, and so I appreciate that. And that's who we are. On another note, anyone who has come to a board meeting and either watched it live knows there's always a table over there, and that's where the associations always sit, and it gives us an opportunity to hear firsthand up close from the board, and it gives us a chance. It's always been kind of a symbol of collaboration between the district and the associations. It's been there for a long time, probably 40 years. It's a courtesy that was always extended to the association. So I was kind of dismayed this week when I was notified that some members of the board no longer wanted that table there, and it kind of caught me off guard a little bit. And I really don't care. I didn't run for president to sit at the table. I ran for president to serve, and I'm here to serve, and I can serve from any seat in the room and any place in the district, and the only thing that matters to me is that I have people sitting with me. So my people are here tonight. Thank you for coming. I am here to serve. I am here to collaborate, and that's who we are.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sarah Phillips, a librarian at Yorbalinda High School. I'm here tonight to thank the district for the continuing efforts with our monthly cultural celebrations, February's Black History Month. The Yorbalinda High School library has a book and poster display up, and there's pictures on Facebook right now for that on the Yorbalinda High School page. There's also a virtual display with online resources for students to expand their knowledge of this part of American history. So with diversity in mind, free choice of diverse books helps all of our students. Books can be mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors. This idea was developed by education scholar Rudine Sims Bishop. Mirror books let students see characters like themselves who are valued in the world, and they feel a sense of belonging. Window books help us develop understandings about the wider world. Students need to learn about how other people conduct themselves in the world in order to understand how they might fit in it. And then sliding door, sliding door books further expand on the concept of windows. Instead of just viewing another person's culture or experience, glass doors allow readers to walk into a store and become part of the world. The goal here is to encourage reflection and action. Sliding doors result in a reader's change or expansion of their perspective. I hope everyone has been reading some good and diverse books so far this year.
Hello, my name is Ryan Sotiris. My spelling is good, my writing not so much. I didn't grow up in the school district, what can I say? I had a lot of things I wanted to say. Some of them were nicer, some of them weren't. Some of them have been somewhat addressed, but the overlying theme, I guess, that I want to say is that intimidation, bullying should no more be accepted in this room than in any of our classrooms or our schools. Both sides of this need to remember that we all care about the children. Otherwise, none of us would be here at 8 o'clock on a Tuesday night, coming in from wherever you came in from, downtown L.A. for me, which is why I'm dressed like this. So, you know, the guffawing, the snarkiness when you don't agree with what somebody else said, I mean, to me, that just breeds that type of, "I want to intimidate you into not speaking, into not saying what's on your mind," and it shouldn't be acceptable. And whichever side you're on, if it's the person behind you doing it and you know that they're normally in agreement with you, it's okay to turn around and say to them like, "Hey, let them have their speech." I'm not going to believe every word that comes out of every person's mouth in here. I'm just not. When they stand up here and tell me what their kids heard, I don't necessarily believe it, but I might believe that there's a teacher or two suffering some burnout. Lastly, before I run out of time, I believe the AR reading program is paid for by the PTAs of our schools, so I'm not sure who else to blame, because I know my PTA would gladly pay for it again. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shanny Murray, and I just want to thank the district for adding to the agenda a discussion about enhancing safe and respectful schools. We all want our students to thrive academically, but that starts by making sure students feel welcome, and district policy alone can't create that environment. Resolution 2112 actually creates roadblocks by banning the practice of interrogating race and racism in society. We need to be able to talk about racism. We also need to address homophobia and transphobia, and we need to better support our students with disabilities. So I hope the district, as it searches for ways to create safe and respectful schools, starts by reaching out and listening to students in our district who are experiencing racism, homophobia, transphobia, and discrimination.
Okay, last three include Reagan, Kim, Rothry. Reagan Rothry, Pam, Priya, whoops, and Raquel Fleischer.
My name's Reagan Rothry. Happy Black History Month. I am going to be reading an excerpt from a piece by Black Southern writer and professor of English and creative writing at Rice University, Kais Lehman. This piece is called "The Worst of White Folks." "The worst of white folks, I understood, wasn't some gang of rabid white people in crisp pillowcases and shaved heads. The worst of white folks was a pathetic, powerful it. It conveniently forgot that it came to this country on a boat, then reacted violently when anyone or anything suggested it share. The worst of white folks wanted our mamas and grandmas to work themselves sick for a tiny sliver of an American pie it needed to believe it had made from scratch. It was all at once crazymaking and quick to violently discipline us for acting crazy. It had an insatiable appetite for virtuoso black performance and routine black suffering. The worst of white folks really believed that the height of black and brown aspiration should be emulation of its mediocre self. The worst of white folks inherently disproportionate inherited disproportionate access to quality health care, food, wealth, fair trials, fair sentencing, college admittance, college graduations, promotions, and second chances, yet still terrorized and shamed other Americans who lacked adequate access to healthy choices at all. White Americans were wholly responsible for the worst of white folks, though they would do all they could to make sure it never wholly defined them."
Pam? Sorry, Priya.
All right. I've homeschooled one of my kids for five years because he had a miserable experience at Bryant Ranch Elementary, but last fall, he decided to give public school another try. I asked the high school counselor about how he could get credits for his prior work. She said there was no path since my homeschool wasn't accredited. The state of California doesn't require a homeschool, private school, to be accredited. But if I had further questions, reach out to Ed Services, which I did, and I got the same no from Linda Adamson. She said that was P-Y-L policy. I didn't push it any further because I wasn't sure if my kid would stay, but he loves all his teachers, he's done well, and he's received all As on his first report card. So about two weeks ago, I decided to ask for that policy Linda Adamson mentioned because it appears my kids want to stay on. Turns out, there's no policy. She made it up. She made it up. So I'm left wondering, what kind of people work at this school district? Do you even know your own job? How can an employee fabricate something so substantial? Did I get disparate treatment for some reason? Why do we have employees that do nothing but frustrate and irritate rather than assist? But I blame the old board, current board, and the superintendent. No supervision, no real leadership, no accountability. This is the same Linda Adamson that was up here talking last fall about how she will give a vendor the recently passed board policies. I asked for a copy of that Playworks contract. Nothing was attached, but David Giordano goes ahead and signs it, no problem. No one seems to care about abiding by any board wishes or policies. District staff is also unaware that private schools in the state are not required to be accredited, that homeschoolers don't have to follow any A through G requirements, and frankly, don't give a damn about those requirements and are still accepted to UCs and CSUs. In fact, some might argue my kid would have an advantage graduating as a homeschooler because it's different and sets him apart. So I need help from someone in this district I can trust, because I certainly do not trust Adamson.
Hi, everyone. My name is Priya, and I've had children in the district for over a decade and counting. February is Black History Month, as we've been discussing, and so I thought I would start tonight with a quote from one of my favorite American scholars, James Baldwin. "You think your pain and your heartbreak are unprecedented in the history of the world, but then you read. It was books that taught me that the things that tormented me most were the very things that connected me with all people who were alive, who had ever been alive." There's something magical about seeing yourself reflected in a story, seeing your family, your culture, your values, even when those are different from the people around you or maybe mostly when that's the case. So what happens when books and stories are censored and denied to our young people exactly at the time that they are developing their sense of who they are? One effect of the CRT ban and this new literature review process, we agree, I also don't like it, and the removal of books from our school libraries, is that many of our kids will never realize that they are not alone in this world, and there are so many other people who are struggling and are being challenged the same way as them, and it robs them of their humanity. So here are, thank you, here are some of the books that have shaped me the most, and all of them would be banned from being taught at P-Y-L U-S-D in high school. "A Small Place" by Jamaica Kincaid because it addresses systemic racism. "Octavia Butler Dawn" because it addresses systemic racism and non-heteronormative gender and sexuality. "White Teeth" by Zadie Smith addresses systemic racism and colonialism. Toni Morrison's "Sula," you gotta read this one, but it addresses systemic racism. "Zamie," Audrey Lord, she's my hero, addresses non-heteronormative sexuality.
Good evening. I'm Raquel Fleischner, parent and educator. Tonight, on the agenda, the board will discuss enhancing focus area for safe and respectful schools. During this discussion, I hope trustees share their perspective based on their experience with their own children in the district, but most importantly, their school site visits. And for clarity, I don't mean only what you hear from parents at a school play or a sports event. I mean what you've gathered from observing in-class instruction. The conversations you had with a representative group of teachers you met on campus, not your cherry-picked group of many teachers you refer to every month. And the students you speak with on campus who aren't your own and don't look like you. I guarantee you, just one conversation with the Travis Ranch ASB president, which I hope during your visit you spoke with, would help you gain an understanding of the kinds of hate speech heard on campus every single day. Additionally, I'm not interested in how you will punish students. I want to know how you will educate them. I have heard personally from admin that they feel their hands are tied regarding discussions involving racism, as well as the history and true implications of the words students are using. We know students don't understand the words they're using, which is why they're using them, so we need to teach them. Why is it hate speech? Where is the history? Why is this wrong? It's not just because it's unkind, there's more to it than that. And does our CRT ban keep us from giving our students that education, which is an education which will serve them beyond just being at our P-Y-L U-S-D schools? It will serve them in college, it will serve them in their jobs in this increasingly diverse world we live.
Okay, we have one more speaker, Steph Vassler. Okay, we have one more speaker, Steph Vassler.
Hi. So I guess my speech has changed about fifteen times in sitting here. To Ryan, I agree with you. We need to reach across that aisle, and everyone's here because they love somebody in this district. All of you, whether you all agree or not, want to do what you think is best. What I can tell you is Travis Ranch is a disaster on many levels, including our X A P falsifying disciplinary reports I figured out today. So that's something that I will figure out how to address with you guys later, but that's a huge problem as he's now been moved up in the district. On notes of stuff going on at Travis Ranch, I'm going to be very honest about what was just spoken. The kids are using language, but they all are into 90s rap, and they all think it's brand-new. And we all grew up on it. So the reality is, is they are doing some of the same stuff we all did, but we live in a different world than we did in the 90s. That's the truth. But the problem is not the hate speech. The problem is those parents need to have a discussion with their children. It does not fall on every teacher. I can sit here all day long and tell you how mad I am at teachers for one reason or another. I have three kids going through special ed. There are problems in this district. I sat here a week and a half ago with Shelley, and, I'm so sorry, I'm drawing a blank on your name right now, because... Yeah. Thank you. Because we were doing El Cap stuff, and I was literally in tears. But I'm telling you, these kids think they've, like, created this little bubble. And you want to talk about the A S B president? She is one of the sweetest girls in the entire world. But we're going to use her as an example. She is one of the sweetest, whitest, I mean wider than me, girls. And she has a heart of gold. She's not going to throw somebody under the bus. She wants everyone to get along. She is a dancer. She puts her heart and soul into everything. That girl does. But the problem is, we stop talking to our kids in any form other than, "Don't do that."
Thank you. Okay. That ends public comment. At this point, let's do, let's do about a five-minute break. Restroom, stretch our legs, and then we'll meet back here at 8:20. Okay, folks, let's go ahead and get seated. We're going to go ahead and continue with our, our meeting. Wrap up your conversations, please, and that's, let's get moving. Sooner we get started, the sooner we can finish. Okay, next in our agenda are the action items. This is going to be our general function portion. I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Board Policy 3515, Security Cameras, Second Reading.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion presented by Ms. Blades and seconded by Mr. Frazier. Okay, Dr. Matthews, would you introduce this item?
Yes, I will. This is our second time for you to see this policy. I'd like to introduce our director, Jeremy Powell, to introduce the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Youngblood, members of the board, Superintendent Matthews, and Executive Cabinet. Included on the agenda tonight is the second reading of purported Board Policy 3515, Security Cameras. Based on direction received from the board at the January meeting, references to related board policies have been added at the bottom of this policy. Additionally, a statement has been added that the superintendent or designee will maintain a list of staff authorized to access the security cameras, video recordings, and images. You will note that staff did not make any changes to the statement that live monitoring may occur, which was part of the original recommended GAMMIT language. As you know, the district is not currently staffed or equipped to provide continuous live monitoring. However, the language has been retained to allow for future consideration.
Awesome. Any questions?
Hi. I have just a comment. I didn't know a lot about security footage. I don't have my expertise in that. So I did a lot of reading since the last meeting. And I really feel like this, with that additional language, that the policy really reflects standards, you know, throughout the... For policies for best practice. And so, thank you, because it does state our goals for the security cameras. Talks about placement and communication and who will be authorized. So thank you for making sure that it's fully complete now, and I think it's great.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right. Yes, I thought it was very well-written. I didn't see any, any issues with it initially. Okay, so with that said, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Four plus our student board member. Thank you. All right, that leads us to... I'm going to need a motion for the next item.
I'll make a motion to establish Board Policy 1230, School Connected Organizations, First Reading.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. Dr. Matthews, if you would.
Yes, thank you. Good evening again, President Youngblood, trustees, and the Executive Cabinet members. On the agenda tonight is a first reading of a new policy, Board Policy 1230, School Connected Organizations. You know that the board reviews, updates, and/or develops policies, which we're doing right now, to ensure compliance with state law or establish procedures regarding the operations of the district. Back in the fall, I remember hearing in our public comments section community members being concerned about the amount of money being requested by boosters for their sports teams. As I heard those concerns, we began working with staff to examine our processes for working with booster clubs. This new policy is for the purpose of establishing guidelines for parent organizations, such as the booster clubs that are so helpful in supporting extracurricular programs throughout the district. This policy, the foundation of which was developed by C S B A and GAMMIT, has been augmented to reflect the best practices in other school districts. If approved for a first reading, we'll bring this policy back at our April meeting. Over the next two months, we will solicit input and feedback from our site principals, athletic directors, A S B directors, our arts groups, booster clubs, and others on how we plan to implement this new policy. It's our belief that this will align and centralize many of our processes that are already in place. It will increase transparency and accountability in the process. I'd like to give you a brief overview of the policy because it is new. And so if you turn to the policy itself, just some highlights of what we're looking at. What we're looking for in our booster clubs is specifics about what they're doing with their programs that year and the funds they are attempting to raise. So if you look down at the bottom where it begins, the numerical part of it, the one through five on page one, just looking for basic information, what their, what their, the name of it is, what their bylaws are, who the officers are, and then specific objectives. What are you, how are you doing fundraising for that year? What, if you get donations from your families, what are you planning to use those donations for? It's very important that the letter that goes out is a true request for donations and not a demand for fees. And so we want to see a copy of that donation letter before it goes out. When you raise those funds, what are the expenses planned? We, I know that, again, our booster clubs do great things for our organization, so it could be band instruments, could be uniforms, equipment, travel, et cetera. What is your budget showing all income and expenditures? The name of the bank where it's being held? We want to make sure the principal supports this endeavor. If you have money at the end of the year, what are you planning to use that for? And also, because you are an independent organization, making sure you have liability insurance to protect the organization and the officers in it. If you, a little further down, talks about teachers and coaches can have advisory roles, but neither they nor their families should be making, should be holding offices. Again, this is a parent organization that should be able to do with the parent funds what they want to do. Again, a lot of these things are being done already by, in school, by school, but they aren't in a centralized way. And this is a way that the board can make sure we, we, we see what's going on, and if we are, and I guarantee you, having done this before, in ninety-eight percent of the cases, we're going to be a hundred percent in favor of what people are doing. But if we, if we think the fees are, the donations, rather, are too high, we can deal with that. If we think that the finances are, should be used in a different way, we can work on that, too. And so I do recommend the policy. I think we have a lot of work to do and communicate with booster clubs, but I bring it to the board for your consideration tonight in the first reading.
Questions?
Okay, on the bottom of page six, and then the last paragraph, and then it goes over to page seven. I was wondering if we could have some more common language and not so lawyer-y talk in there, so it's more understandable to the boosters. When I read this, I, I stopped and I pulled out and started researching words and the ed code, and, and I thought, do I really understand this? And would our parent-connected groups really understand what that is? So maybe it's just some...
Are you referring to the line about the testamentary act?
Yeah.
I did pull up my dictionary for that one, too.
Yeah.
And, and so I think I know what it means in terms of bequesting gifts to a, to a school directly. But, and that was a policy added by a law firm. So your inclination is correct. And so, yes, we can make it less lawyerly.
Thank you. And then, let's see, what else did I have on here?
May I add one thing while you're thinking?
Okay.
I did, I neglected to mention that when we bring this back to you, one of the things we also think we should be doing is the district pays for a head coach for a varsity level. The district pays for an assistant coach whenever you have that. And that coach is often coaching the JV level. But when a team has a third team, like a Frost Soft team, the district does not cover that. We are going to bring back a recommendation that we should be covering that. I think that will truly help these, these schools. It will, in some cases, we, I've learned that some teams never formed because the funding wasn't there to do it. In other cases, it would reduce the amount of money being asked of the parent, by the parent organizations as well. And so as a, as part of a whole package, and making sure that we have a good policy in place, but also provide the funding to operate in a, in a, at least a functional manner.
Also, I really like number seven, where it lists like where the bank accounts are and things like that. I belong to too many organizations where that information has been lost and not kept up, and it's become problematic later on. I like that it's a clear definition, clear expectations. I think it's a really good guide. So thank you for all your work on it.
Thank you.
Point of clarification, this is not something to inhibit fundraising. It's to limit what's asked of families, correct?
It's to make sure we ask for funds in the correct way. It's to make sure the funds being asked are reasonable. And it's just to let us, because we, in many ways, are responsible for the way the booster clubs operate. And so just having a good communication between the district, the board, and the booster clubs.
Okay, perfect. And then on the, on page six, where it talks about the teachers and coaches not being a part of, not holding offices, should we say something specifically about not having voting powers?
We can, we can do that.
I mean, I think it's kind of inherent in offices, but spelling out voting powers might be beneficial?
Thank you.
And then a question about the way we define the organizations. Instead of extracurricular, in the first paragraph, can we use co-curricular? Since they do receive a grade, it is a period class for athletics and band and...
I, I, yeah, we'll figure how to do that. You and I had that conversation, and I think in cases where they are graded, you could call it co-curricular. We do have a few that aren't grade-based, and so...
That's true.
And so maybe we do all-encompassing terms there, include co-curricular and extracurricular.
That would be great.
But I'll, I'll look at that. Yes, sir.
The only thing I think is, my concern with all of this was as the many sports are going on, there are some fees that are extremely reasonable, and then some that seem just... Yes. Great word. And so as we sit here and we talk about all of this equity in education and giving everybody a chance, there are some kids that cannot afford, pay $2,000 for a baseball team. And so that's really where we are going with this, is what is reasonable? And so it's not about the board or the district trying to micromanage it. It's supposed to, it's about making sure that the field of play is there for everyone. And so that's really what our concern was when we brought this forward, is that our athletics have not been funded well. How can we fund, as Dr. Matthews says, we're looking for, you know, additional coaching positions? But also, too, is we want to make sure, as a board, that everybody has the opportunity to play. And it's, and, you know, for somebody to say, hey, I can't go play basketball, or I can't go play baseball because the funds were way too high, that's just not acceptable. And that's not acceptable to me, and I know it's not acceptable to my board members. And so this is one of the real reasons that we brought this forward, because as we still try to work to get more funding into our schools and fund our children. And so I thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Dr. Matthews, would you know how many school-connected organizations the district has currently?
I do not know that number. I know we've looked at that a little bit. I, it's somewhere in the neighborhood between fifty and eighty, I would say.
Awesome. Okay. With that, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Four plus our student board. The next piece on our agenda, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt number, Resolution Number 22-17, designated in the month of February 2023 as Career and Technical Education Month.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion by Trustee Frazier and seconded by Trustee Blades. Dr. Adamson, if you would.
Of course, thank you. Well, good evening, President Youngblood, members of the board, Dr. Matthews, Executive Cabinet, and members of the community. Tonight, we bring to you the reading of Resolution 2217, which declares February as Career and Technical Education Month. We're so very proud of our various career technical education or C T E programs, which offer a variety of ways for our students to be successful and find rewarding careers by offering diversity in education, training, and soft skills that academic courses alone simply cannot provide. We recognize the value of C T E in preparing students for high-wage, high-demand careers and in providing a skilled workforce for the future. This month highlights the need for investment in these important programs while raising awareness about the opportunities available to students through C T E. It is my pleasure at this time to share this video with all of you this evening, highlighting the many incredible C T E programs we offer.
Welcome to the Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District's Career Link Academies. We have unique and exciting career and technical education opportunities at each of our comprehensive high schools that prepare our students to be future-ready. Our C T E programs provide the academic and technical skills, knowledge, and training necessary to succeed in future careers and to become lifelong learners. Here is a look at what each of our P Y L U S D schools has to offer.
Esperanza High School has a strong tradition of excellence in our two Career Link Academies, Medical Sciences and Aztec Engineering and Manufacturing. In both academies, students learn in state-of-the-art classrooms equipped with the most current industry-standard equipment, technology, and curriculum. Students in the Medical Sciences Academy study medical terminology, body systems and disorders, and minimally invasive procedures in preparation for the capstone course, where they have the opportunity to complete an externship in a local medical office setting. The Aztec Engineering and Manufacturing Academy's motto, "From Concept to Product," illustrates how students learn the elements of engineering design and then see their design through all stages of production. Both academies allow students to gain hands-on, real-world experience, preparing them to be college and career-ready and empowering them to be the leaders of the next generation.
At Yorbalinda High School, students have opportunities to become future-ready. Our Mustang Business Academy includes the innovative business management and culinary art hospitality management pathways. We offer specialized academic and career technical education courses, which include business communication and technology, business management and leadership, culinary arts, and culinary hospitality management. Our academies prepare tomorrow's leaders as students take part in work-based learning opportunities, partnering with local businesses, earning industry-recognized certifications, and community college credit. Academy graduates will develop leadership and... will develop leadership and critical thinking skills in a collaborative environment, all necessary in our ever-changing global society. At Yorbalinda High School, we encourage all students to get connected, and our pathways provide an opportunity for students to be involved while developing essential skills for college and careers.
Eldorado is defined by its community. That's true whether you're cheering in the Hawks' nest at a sporting event, performing onstage at an arts event, reviewing for an exam in an AP class, or collaborating within our two Career Link Academies, the Digital Media Arts Academy and ED Law. Hawks achieve excellence, and we achieve it together. In our academies, you can pursue your passions alongside people who share them, whether you're making a film with industry-standard equipment, cross-examining a witness in front of a real judge, entering one of your photographs in a national competition, serving as a peer court juror, designing a logo for a local company, or attending a law school class. You're working within a team of fellow Hawks, teachers, and local professionals who are invested in your success. You're learning to communicate, to collaborate, to manage projects and complete difficult tasks. You're building skills that last you a lifetime and be valuable in any academic or career pursuit. You're telling your story, from an opening statement to a closing argument. We are a community, and we welcome you to become a part of it.
Valencia High School offers a wide range of career technical educational opportunities for students. Our prestigious Valtech program allows students to specialize in high-end academics and technology across three sectors: arts, media and entertainment, business and finance, and information and communication technology. We offer specific pathways for students to specialize in computer science, networking, cybersecurity, mechatronics, business and finance, media and design, production and managerial arts, and visual communications. Valtech students are also provided with internship opportunities to apply the knowledge they have gained.
At Valencia, our motto is pride, tradition, excellence. And this rings true for our Valtech program and Career Link Academies.
All of the Career Link Academies within the Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District integrate student learning with real-world opportunities. Our CTE academies expose students to different career fields, motivate them to think about their personal college and career path, and integrate the development of 21st century professional skills. This is today's career and technical education, and these opportunities are available today at Placentia Yorbalinda Unified High Schools.
Well, Ms. Gina Aguilar plays a pivotal role in the implementation, oversight, and coordination of our district's CTE program, to which we attribute our ongoing success and the many doors that continue to be open for so many of our students. To present this resolution, it's my pleasure to introduce our Director of High School Curriculum and Instruction, Ms. Gina Aguilar.
Thank you, Dr. Adamson. Good evening, President Youngblood, members of the board, Superintendent Matthews, Executive Cabinet, and community members. I just want to say that video brings out so much pride for our programs and just excitement about where we are and where we're going. So I'm happy everyone got to see that this evening. Each February, we honor our outstanding CTE programs in recognition of Career and Technical Education Month. PYLUSD is home to six Career Link Academies and 28 CTE pathways, all of which serve as a huge source of pride for our district. Many of these programs have been recognized across Orange County, and some have even received national recognition and awards over the past several years. The goal of our CTE programs is to help ensure our students are college and career-ready by providing them with technical and academic skills, leadership opportunities, and dynamic hands-on experiences that rival those of college students in the same fields. Our state-of-the-art facilities include high-end technology and equipment that keep our students on the cutting edge of what industry is using. The backbone of our programs is our CTE teachers, shout out to a couple I saw in the audience tonight, whose vision, innovation, and commitment have made PYLUSD a model for career and technical education. And perhaps our biggest source of pride are the thousands of students who have benefited from our CTE programs and now represent PYLUSD in their college and career pursuits. We would also like to acknowledge and thank North Orange County ROP, our partners in career technical education. It is through this partnership that we are able to offer so many unique opportunities to our students. We are grateful for the board's ongoing support of career technical education in PYLUSD. And it is for these many reasons that I present to you this evening for your approval, Resolution Number 22-17, declaring February as Career and Technical Education Month. Thank you.
Questions?
That excites me. That is-
Me, too.
Whoever made that, they're ready for a job now.
Yeah.
Like, not, not kidding, the slider, the drone, I mean, everything. The video is amazing. This is a thing that I think should be one of the central parts of why people come to this district. We're looking at reasons to fix declining enrollment problems. We're looking for motivation for students to do things in other, in other areas of study. This is huge. I love this so much. My question, we're making a month to celebrate it. Why is it not just like all year long? Why don't we just like, make it a banner thing across the district? Just tell me why we're doing just a month.
Well, I think we do the resolution because it is CTE month and, and ROP does it as a resolution as well. But actually, I've been meeting with Alyssa Griffiths and with my team, and we've been talking about different ways that we can promote our programs more. That video, just to give credit, was made by our Digital Media Arts students at Eldorado, which are amazing. They make the Employee of the Year video also, so you'll see their, their skills there. Yes. Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Sawyer, who knows all about our video production program. She's a pioneer for that program in our district. So we'll shout you out since you're here. But we've been talking about that. You're right. It is a, it is a flagship for our district. All of those programs are excellent. Like I said, we win awards nationally. And so, we've been talking about, what are other ways we can really advertise this to our extended community? So agree with you 100%.
If I may add to that, I, I spoke here on several occasions about our CTE schools. We had our showcase nights.
Yes.
Where we talked about those and that. This is something we talk about all year long.
Yeah.
So it's, it'd been, yeah, we, we celebrate the month with the rest of the, with the, as a support for our, our ROP program in, in Orange County. But it's just something that is, I agree with you. It's a big deal and we, we push it all the time.
Yeah.
I really applaud the district for all the work that they've done to get the CTE programs up and running and these pathways and expand it. And as I learned Thursday, last Thursday, at the, at the LCAT meeting, we've really expanded these programs, you know, from 62 students to have completion rates in 2021 to 304 students in 2022.
Yes.
And I think this resolution is excellent, but we should shout our successes as well in this resolution. So I kind of like to propose, I know I'm famous for this, some changes where we basically say, you know, whereas Placentia Yorbalinda District has increased or expanded, I'm, I'm good on either word, the career technical education opportunities where students' completion or graduation rates have increased from 62 students in 2021 to 304 students in 2022. Because I think that's huge progress, and it really shows how that our district is, is dedicated to this. And we're making great strides. So, and I think it could just be the last whereas.
Sure.
Is this intended to be enshrined in like, this goes on and this is every, every February is a CTE?
We've brought it-
From here forward?
Yeah, we brought it, no, we've brought, we bring it as a resolution each year.
Okay, so I'm just with questioning, if we add something specific to this year, it's not going to make sense.
We can change it.
We can change it every year?
It's a different resolution.
We can change the progress every year. I like it.
Yeah. Resolutions and board policies, that's our, that's our baby.
Absolutely. That's your thing. Yeah.
And since Sue Sawyer's in the crowd, I've had two of my three sons go through, Sue Sawyer had my oldest son for video production, and he loved it. And he got lots of service hours setting up that place when it was minimal. And then my other son, I don't know if he's still here, he is in manufacturing and just loves it. And just, I can't say enough, I cannot say enough about what this district has to offer in this area. So.
Awesome. That sounds amazing. Being a CTE teacher myself in the medical field, I completely applaud our district in doing this and providing all of these, these other options for kids that they want to, want to get out into the workforce. And I, I love that, that ability. So that, let's keep it up. Thank you again for, for doing this.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that said, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It carries four plus one. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'd like to have a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the data science course we offered in the 2023-24 school year.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Trustee Blades and a second by Trustee Frazier. Dr. Adamson, if you would.
Well, good evening again, President Youngblood, members of the board, Dr. Matthews and Executive Cabinet. It's our pleasure to bring forward this evening a proposal for your approval to begin offering data science as an, as an elective course beginning next year. Having been introduced in 2019 as a UCA IIIG-approved math course, it's gained much interest in the last three years amongst almost 400 California high schools who've begun offering data science courses as part of their mathematics course sequences. This offering will meet the need that universities across the nation have emphasized for several years now, that being for incoming students to have experience with data science as well as statistics. It's my pleasure at this time to invite Ms. Gina Aguilar once again to the podium to share more about this exciting opportunity and what the elective course offering, Introduction to Data Science, would mean for our high school students and campuses.
Thank you again, Dr. Adamson, and good evening again, President Youngblood, members of the board, Dr. Matthews, Executive Cabinet, and members of the community. We are proud to bring to you for approval an Introduction to Data Science course that has been developed through the hard work of our PYLUSD Math Task Force over the past couple of years. Data Science is a discipline centered around gathering, processing, modeling, and analyzing data in order to acquire a better understanding of the data. In today's world, there is an infinitely, infinitely increasing need to be able to use and understand data, which makes data science one of the fastest-growing careers in the world. Thus, a focus on data science at both the collegiate and secondary level has paralleled this growth. By offering a data science course in PYLUSD, we will allow our students to have a variety of opportunities to be college and career-ready in the area of mathematics. This course, which is intended primarily as a third-year math course, will provide an option for students to take after completing geometry and will meet the same requirement at the collegiate level as Algebra II. Students may also take it as a math elective after completing Algebra II or another advanced math course. Students with an interest in majors and careers that require statistics courses, including but not limited to IT, business, marketing, sales, education, healthcare, government, communications, entertainment, social service, and transportation infrastructure, will benefit from the opportunity to have this exposure to related content at the high school level. The course we have developed is both rigorous and relevant, challenging students to work hands-on with data and to think critically while regularly using reading, writing, modeling, analysis, and collaboration to do so. As a result, students in our Introduction to Data Science course will have far more practice and experience in the communicating reasoning and problem-solving and modeling data, data analysis claims that are assessed on the casp. These two claims require students to demonstrate the ability to support mathematical conclusions and use appropriate tools and strategies to solve real-world and mathematical problems, which are integral components of the data science curriculum. Other benefits to our students include a unique opportunity for students who may choose to stop after the required two years of mathematics to instead continue on with math in high school. We strongly believe this will increase the number of students taking a third year of math, in addition to the number of students who are college and career-ready according to the College Career Indicator on the California Dashboard. Finally, this course is both A to G and NCAA-approved, providing our students with further opportunities to improve their college application profiles. Each of the four comprehensive high schools have identified teachers who are qualified and excited to teach this course, and we hope to offer it to students beginning in the 2023-24 school year. Thank you for your consideration. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
It's great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's an easy question.
I don't, I, I don't have any questions. All mine were answered. And thanks for sending me the sequence of the courses. That was really helpful. And I just really appreciate this opportunity that we just keep giving our students more opportunities and different ways to succeed that might, you know, interest them and be able to assist them in their math course, especially since we need help.
I think I was very comfortable. Mrs. Finney had me give, you know, get involved in the third grade CGI. So if I go to this class, I think I want to go as an observer only. Let's just like, I'll just make that claim right now. Hey, I know my limitations.
All right. With that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Negative. Motion carries four plus our one. Okay, folks.
President Youngblood, before we go further into board discussion, I'd like to table number two until April.
Okay. A motion to table number two has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion to table and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait, don't we get a discussion?
Ah, you're right.
Oh, sure.
Discussion.
I just was wondering why you want to table it.
For me, it's because we're at a point in which we're doing a supervisory search and rather than cause any unneeded, I guess you would say controversy, I think this would be something more appropriate for a later date.
The reason that I am asking to table is this was not brought to the agenda by any board members. The matters have already been discussed and resolutions are currently in place. And I'm really at a loss as to why we're bringing divisive politics into our board meetings when we have children who cannot read, our English learners have abysmal scores, and our math and reading scores are low across the district. This is not, this does nothing to help our underserved, or underserved communities. We have children in crises, and instead of bringing forward a comprehensive plan and ideas on how to move forward all student education, we have people playing politics with our board. This topic will do nothing to raise our test scores across the district. And this is what we're here to do, is to educate our children. And as I said before, we have resolutions in place. We have talked about this all last year. And I think that it's time to move on and to focus on the education of our students.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, if there are none, then let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Let's go to board discussion item number one. Dr. Matthews.
Just want to say I'm disappointed by that decision, but I respect the board's authority. But I'm disappointed.
Thank you, sir.
In the last meeting, we did hire the, the firm of Orbach Huff &amp; Henderson. The day after the board meeting, we reached out to the firm to be, to start meeting with them about the transition of services. We have, they've come here for a variety of meetings. We've had meetings on, on phone meetings with them. We've had Zoom meetings with Orbach Huff &amp; Henderson. I will say, we've had very positive interactions with them the entire way. But I'll also say, in my, I've been dealing with attorneys now for about 33 years in my jobs. And I've, I've truly appreciated every educational attorney I've worked with. They are good people, in things for the right, for the right reasons, here to support schools. Our attorneys, the ones that we always work with, did not charge exorbitant fees, including this new firm. And they do great work for all schools. So I'm, I'm grateful for all of them. We are in the process of moving, moving work to this new firm, in fact, a great deal of it, to the, to the new firm. So we've also learned what they can and cannot do. And, and so I'd like to talk about that, where, where we are at this point and get board feedback on that. The new firm does not work in the area of workers' comp, so I'm, I'm recommending that we keep our current lawyers that we use in our workers' compensation claims. We use a different insurer for our liability claims with a variety of attorneys that go with that. I'm recommending that we retain the ability to use those attorneys with our liability claims. We have a few cases that are, are well into, in some cases, years into a litigation process. And in talking with Orbach about that, they are, they believe that it would be, make to- And in talking with Orbach about that, they are, they believe that it would be, make total sense to stay with the, with the current representation that we have in those processes as it could require excess costs on their part to catch up with it and it could be, could be harmful to the cases. So in a few cases, we're recommending that. And Orbach does do special education cases, but we are recommending, we have had extreme, yeah, the work we've done with the Harbaugh, Harbaugh Law Group has been extraordinary. We believe we've maintained great relationships with our, with our parents and our, and our district alike. We believe it's saved the district a lot of funds in that area. And so I'm recommending that we maintain the Harbaugh Law Group for our special education claim. In all cases, it's good to have a second firm on, on hand in case we need a second opinion or in case one of the other firm can't do all that. And so that's just good practice as well. And as we get into the end of this year and look at approving our law firms for the following year, we can talk more about that. But again, overall, we're very pleased with our interactions with this new law firm and those are my recommendations at this point.
Who, who's the workers' comp insurance? I'm sorry, attorneys?
Keenan and Associates is our firm and they use a variety of firm, a variety of law firms.
And, and how about liability claims?
Our liability claims, sorry Elaine. Just please.
Thank you. So for workers, workers' compensation, there are suggested attorneys by our T P A, which is a third-party administrator who is Athens administrators. And we change them periodically depending on their workload or different cases and what their expertise is. And so they come recommended by our T P A. As far as liability, that's Keenan through S C R. And S C R has a pool of attorneys, so we can recommend attorneys come on, come off. And usually they use the ones that are expert to the cases that we're working on.
Okay, and so I, I have no problem using the Harbaugh Law Firm, but I would like to just say that Orbach Huff and Henderson, they do actually have a specialty in special education. So if it did come to that, we would be in very good hands. And so my next thing is, is the board was, there was a board directive at our last one that basically we would hire Orbach Huff and Henderson as our board attorney and that as our facilities. And that it would be come forward basically to terminate Atkinson at this next meeting. And so I was curious as to why that didn't come forward as an agenda item. But then also as well, I wanted to make sure because I've heard that Atkinson is also in our professional development. And so I believe it was the will of the board to not have Atkinson carry forward with our professional development any longer as well. So I wanted to make sure that we had made the change to Orbach Huff and Henderson.
I, I, give me one second, please. I'm trying to find the exact motion that was passed with that because I, it was even in our minute, just not as, you described them. I, I believe the, the motion was to hire the firm, that it would be the board's attorney. And that was the end of the motion. But in the conversation, we said that we would research that, look at what, what made sense in terms of transitioning work over and, and bring that issue back to you at this meeting. We, there was an initial motion to, to stop working with one of the law firms, but that motion was withdrawn.
I do recall as we went from that, we said that they were going to take care of facilities and then that they would become the board attorney. And then I also remember saying so in February seventh, we will terminate with Atkinson once, because all of these meetings, we were very confident that all of these meetings would go well. And so I do remember that. And so I'm just curious, is Atkinson still in our professional development?
I believe in terms of professional development, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to be able to move over to Orbach for our trainings in the future. That's what we, that's will be happening. I, but again, the motion, those things were discussed, but the motion was to hire the new firm that it would, that the board would deal with all, O H H for all board matters. And then again, I said we would work with district staff to determine next steps.
I think we'd have to play the tape back because I don't recall that, but that's fine. So I will now request then that in our March board meeting that we terminate all contracts with Atkinson as long as it's not an ongoing, as long as it's not an ongoing, you know, long-term lawsuit because we should be giving Orbach Huff and Henderson all of our professional development as well.
I, I think that what I've said is that, you know, you can't terminate a contract except for certain things. You've got to keep a contract open. And what we are saying is that we are moving the work over to the new law firm, except in cases where there's long-term work.
Okay, so is, as in March, if there's any professional development, it will be through Orbach Huff and Henderson?
I will double-check that for you, but I, our professional development typically will occur at the beginning of each year.
So there's no professional development in April or May?
I will check on that for you.
Okay, anything else? Anything else?
I still, I would like it to be put on the agenda for March that we will terminate our, all non-existing contracts with Atkinson and we will fully move over to Orbach Huff and Henderson. And that's just my wish for right now. I mean,
I believe that's what, what we've done, isn't that correct?
That is what we've done.
I would like it in writing.
I will confirm that.
I would like it in writing. I would like it as, you know, a decision, so things just can't pop up. Because I do know that there is stuff on April and May, I believe, for professional development. And I think that Orbach Huff and Henderson provide excellent professional development. And I think that we should make sure that we move completely in that direction for the board's request.
Okay, Dr. Matthews, you got, got a request?
I'll, I'll get the information to the board.
Excellent. Okay, that brings us to item three in board discussion. This is about the LCAP. Dr. Adamson, if you would.
Well, good evening once again. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening on some of the key components of our district's local control and accountability plan, or as we all now know it, the LCAP. It is designed to communicate both actions and expenditures to support student outcomes and overall performance for a three-year period. Essentially, it provides the vehicle for us, P Y L, to engage in three distinct functions. Comprehensive strategic planning is a means to establish actions and goals. Two, stakeholder engagement. And three, accountability and compliance. The compliance piece requires that we update our plan annually to reflect progress towards our established, established goals. And essentially, we use it therefore as a roadmap for continuous improvement. To make it more meaningful, we've aligned and based our LCAP to our Placentia Yorbelinda strategic plan, the Advantage. Each goal of the LCAP you'll see is aligned to one of the Advantage Plan's focus areas and strategies that we identified back in two thousand nineteen to help guide decision-making. It's a three-year plan that outlines progress and areas for improvement. Next year, we'll be moving into the third year of that three-year plan. So all of the input that we are gathering now will help guide actions that will land in the third year and that's next year of our LCAP. Placentia Yorbelinda has a long history of partnering with families, staff members, students and the community at large. And so Dr. Matthews will now outline for us just how many groups we meet with and how that process works.
Thank you, Dr. Adamson. This is a, a list of all the meetings that we've already had and the meetings that we continue to have in this process. And so we started back in January. And again, in each of these meetings, we are, we are explaining to them what the LCAP is all about. We were talking to them about the data that we have know. We're talking about the goals that we have for the future and getting their feedback. And so we are accumulating a great deal of feedback that we plan to bring to you at the April twenty-fifth board session. So by the time we get to that, we will be able to accumulate that. We'll also be able to integrate comments board members have already made and any comments made at tonight's meeting along the way as well. And so you can see all kinds of students, all kinds of parents, all kinds of employees have been, we've solicited their impact and their input rather, and that we're, that data collection is amassing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. So to help us establish strengths and areas for improvement, the California Dashboard reports how district schools and student groups are performing across state and local measures. We're required to measure our strengths and areas of need based on the dashboard and in so doing, assign LCAP actions in those areas of greatest need. So we're going to go ahead and just go through for the purposes of time this evening. I'm just going to highlight a few of those areas of strength. I will go into a little bit more detail of that when we come back together in April for our board study session. But the first focus area is academic achievement. The state annually measures student performance through the Smarter Balance Assessment and reports the information on the California Dashboard in terms of five levels that range from very low and low to medium, high and then very high. So some of the highlights here in looking specifically at English Language Arts, we are proud to present, to report that the California Dashboard rated us as high for English Language Arts based on the Smarter Balance data. And that's when we're looking at, you know, at all students, so overall district-wide. Looking at trends, as we're identifying and analyzing the various grade levels, we noticed that sixth graders actually outscored their county peers by ten percent. Once again, that's specifically looking at English Language Arts. Continuing on with focus area one point oh, now moving into the area of mathematics. That's also based on our Smarter Balanced Assessments. And here too, we're proud to report that we scored high in the area of math on the Smarter Balanced. Looking at grade levels, we noted that our third graders actually outperformed their Orange County peers by ten percent in math. Once again, based on that Smarter Balanced data. You know, two other areas of pride, here are continuing on with academic achievement. We noted that our students taking advanced placement exams, that rose to eighty-four percent. I know we, we reported that at the beginning of the school year. We're very proud to see that improvement. And then a ninety-eight percent pass rate for our students taking international baccalaureate or I B exams. So that was focus area one point oh. Moving on to focus area two point oh, this is specific to effective instruction and leadership. There are specific measurements that the, the dashboard requires us to look at in this particular area. And it's actually four levels that they measure. The first is where the students have standards-aligned instructional, instructional materials. The second is whether we're implementing the state content standards. The third is that we're providing a broad course of study. And number four, that teachers are appropriately credentialed in the subjects that they are teaching. And so we have a variety of ways, you know, of measuring that. But one of the main means, we utilize our stakeholder survey results. And so here too, just, you know, highlighting, you know, some of the, the areas of pride. Looking at some of the results we received from parents, and this is from our, our spring twenty-twenty-two survey results that went out this time, you know, in February last year. Eighty-eight percent of parents reported that they feel classroom instruction prepares their child for the next grade level. And eighty-six percent of parents report that teachers at their school have appropriate expectations. Looking at our student data, we see that ninety-one percent of students reported they feel they're learning new things. And ninety-two percent of students report that they feel their school expects really good work. So again, just our ability and, you know, in, in, to raise the expectations, ensuring that we're holding students not only accountable, but, you know, ensuring that they're, they're stretching themselves and learning new things constantly. So we're proud of those results. It is my pleasure at this time to introduce Dr. Shady Spessard, our Director of Student Achievement and Support. And she will review with us focus area three and four.
Thank you, Dr. Adamson. Area three point oh is engaged community. As we mentioned a little bit earlier, we took these results from last year's annual survey, which is currently taking place. So again, we'll have updated results to report out on that. But based on last year's survey, we showed that eighty percent of our students reported that they feel like they belong in school. We had eighty-one percent of students report that teachers and other adults at their school care about them. And eighty-seven percent of parents reported that they have access to information about the district's schools, programs, activities and student achievement. Additionally, we are proud to share that we met the same mandated local indicator for parent and family engagement. And MET is the highest rating in this district when we report MET. That is based on a self-reflection tool. As we move to graduation rates, we scored high, overall rate of ninety-four point two percent of our students graduated in the twenty-twenty-two school year. Looking at dropout rates, our middle school remains at zero percent dropout and our high school is at a very low level of two point two percent. Again, making sure that we are focusing on who those students are, knowing how we can support them in graduation. And we're constantly reflecting on that piece. As we move to area four point oh, this is safe and respectful environments. Each of our schools proud to share that they have a comprehensive safety plan. And that safety plan has been created with community partnerships. Each of our thirty-four schools has a plan that they've gone over with their staff diligently. And so in that area, we are proud of that. We also have the consistent implementation of P B I S, which is our Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. Each of our thirty-four sites has a program in place. They start with a big kickoff. They teach plenty of expectations within each area of their campuses and reward kids for making good choices. And last but not least, we have the State Accountability Dashboard. We scored low for suspensions. This one is a little tricky. We want to be low in this area. So keeping that in mind, that our endeavors, as you mentioned before, A S T, catching kids, doing the right thing and also making sure that we are looking for teachable moments. We are proud to share that is a low level for us. And it is my pleasure now to turn it back over to Dr. Adamson for our greatest needs.
Thank you, Dr. Spessard. So now that we've reflected on and shared some of our areas of highlight, now the important part of that is we need to identify what our areas of greatest needs are because ultimately that's going to be what, where we need to focus our actions in, in identifying programs and supports for next year. So we've identified five areas of need, once again, all based on the results and the scores that are presented and that we've just reviewed with you from the dashboard. So the first two are on the next slide and you'll see that we've identified them specific to, to academic achievement. So the first one being English Language Arts and the second math. And you'll recall when we shared at the beginning of the presentation, we talked about the California Dashboard had reported that we were doing, we were scored high in both Language Arts and in math, and that was for all students. However, you know, one of the other areas that the dashboard looks at is they break those scores down by student group. So when we look at our student groups, there are six student groups identified as scoring two or more levels below that of all students. And so they are listed there, our English learners, homeless, Hispanic, low-income, our students with disabilities and foster youth student groups. All our, our, our student groups that we're going to want to ensure that we're identifying actions to put into, into place supports for targeted instruction for next year. And that really moves into, into the, the second one, which is specific to math. And you'll see, you know, very similar, once again, we scored high on the dashboard when looking at all students. But once again, we broke it down by student group. It was noticeable that there were seven student groups who were scoring two or more levels below that of all students. And that was our African-American students, English learners, homeless, Hispanic, low-income, students with disabilities and foster youth student group. What's interesting there is you see that many of those are duplicated, right, in both subject areas. So, you know, I know that ties in a little with some of the conversations we've had this evening. You know, just that ability for us to be able to engage, excite students, you know, C T E programs. I think just really our ability to ensure that, you know, we're offering those programs for them that is going to be of interest to them and allow them to, you know, engage and connect to the curriculum that they're learning. So those are the first two. And to talk us through the remaining three, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Spessard.
Thank you, Dr. Adamson. The third area of need is graduation. While we are very proud of our overall number, as we look at our students specifically, our English learners and students with disabilities, we have some work to do. And so making sure that we are really looking at our students with disabilities at a young age and finding opportunities for them to mainstream into the general ed environment and receive that diploma is a huge focus of ours, as well as our English learners, knowing who our students are, monitoring them and reclassifying them as soon as possible. In the area of chronic absenteeism, this is a high area for all student groups as it is across California. It gets tricky. We talk about come to school, but we also say stay home if you have symptoms. And so balancing that, unpacking students that maybe don't have symptoms, but there's other barriers that we can support with getting them to school. that we can support with getting them to school. So that area there is high, and it's definitely a focus. And last but not least, cultivating safe and respectful schools. While we had some great statistics in our areas of greatest progress, the flip side of that is, we see that 20% of our students on the annual survey, their perception is that they do not feel safe at school. We saw that 17% of students did not feel that an adult on campus treated them with fairness and respect. And we saw that 20% of our students do not feel like they belong. And so taking that into account, we want to see those numbers increase so they have that sense of belonging and they know that there's an adult on campus they can turn to at absolutely any time. So I will turn it back over to Dr. Adams.
Thank you, Dr. Spessard. Well, that really ends the, the presentation part of tonight. We really wanted the, the remaining part of this to allow each of you to now share some of your feedback and input. As you know, we're in the process currently of completing all of our input sessions. We have, I think, about three more remaining. We anticipate to be finished with all of those by the end of next week. We have allowed for the surveys, the Google forms to remain open. And so we, the deadline we've given February 18th, at which time we will have collected, you know, all of the input from those various sessions, at which time we go ahead and analyze, we go through and look for patterns and themes, put that together. And ultimately, that helps identify, you know, some of the actions that will end up in the first draft proposal, in, in addition to everything that you're sharing with us this evening, and, and have, you know, shared with us over the past few months as well. And so really, I would like to just, you know, open it up to all of you. We have members of our Ed Services team who'll be taking notes as well to be sure we capture ideas. And we'd love to be able to just document and, and have your input at this time.
I, I just had a quick question, just about the last slide. When it's talking about cultivating safe and respectful environments, is, is 20% of the students don't feel safe at school? 17% don't feel an adult on campus treats them with fairness and respect? And 20% doesn't feel like they belong? Is there a way to break it down into the different groups?
Do you mean student groups or by grade level?
Student groups.
You know, we, we didn't gather it that, we can do it, we have it by grade level, and we can share that with you absolutely, but not by student groups. When we gather the, the, the survey data, let me get back to on that, and I will verify if we, if we can break it down by-
Don't we ask, don't we ask what their ethnic group is and all that stuff on the same survey?
If we do, then yes, we would be able to break it down. So I will get back to on that for sure. Yeah.
It's just, just curiosity.
What do we, or do we have an estimated margin of error in these surveys that we're basing all this on? Like 5%, 2%, 12% we guess is wrong?
There's always an estimated margin of error. We know that, you know, with any statistics and data. But, you know, essentially, these are the, the survey data that we send out to our own parents and students. And so we're collecting, you know, what they're, you know, giving to us. And so, you know, even if you were to take out, I think that small margin of error, you know, I think the statistics speak for themselves. They're very powerful.
Sure. I just was curious, because when you're looking at statistics and things like, especially when, I'm going to say it here, I dislike the California Dashboard because it doesn't give us numbers. It gives us colors and words, which we have to deal with. I understand that. I do like that we have, we do have the data, which is good. When I look at the charts, because we got a breakdown by grade, thank you very much for that, we are considered high, yet our math comprehension is at 52% across the board, and our reading is at 64 across the board. And there's a slide in here that talks about, where is it? The APIB programs that are just crushing. We have advanced placement rose 84% and 98% pass rate on the IB exams. So they're really pulling us up, which means these numbers are, feel a little inflated, which I'm saying, we have a lot of work to do.
Which numbers are you referring to?
The numbers that says we're 52% in math and 64% in reading, those are pulled up extremely by our, our intense population of APIB students. So I'm just saying, when we look at, when I look at 52 and 64, I think I'm probably looking at 48 and 53, 55-ish? When you look at the students that are not in APIB. I'm just saying, we got a lot of work to do. And from the standpoint of that being a, an achievement thing, I don't know. I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking for lots of solutions. So-
And that's exactly the purpose of this evening, right?
Yep, absolutely.
And, and our gathering input and our ability as a staff to come together and, you know, put together new actions, right, based on the data that we have. On that, we agree.
Absolutely. Tonight, we celebrated a amazing math teacher that has done phenomenal work throughout her career. And I am sure that we have teachers that, in mathematics and, and language art, that are as, as valuable and equally as capable. I would almost wonder why it is that we're not having those teachers give us direction on how we can improve these students in reading and mathematics. And that way, these grades would be phenomenal. We would be, we wouldn't be in the middle of the pack. We would actually be leading. So I, I'm just, just curious why that hasn't happened.
So, you know, strong teachers sharing best practices, that's definitely a part of our, the process that, that we follow. It's part of our PLC process where, you know, teachers get to come together and, and share those practices with one another. I will, you know, say, one of the, the challenges we've had over the last two years has been professional development and training for our staff, being able to, you know, free them up. Substitutes have been a challenge, but that continues to, we, we see the light at the end of the tunnel there in our ability to, you know, be able to, to free up and, and offer more PD next year. We're, we're very optimistic about, you know, being able to return to full day PDs, which is where we were prior to the pandemic. And so, you know, yeah, I mean, we, we've been working, you know, through those challenges in, in offering, you know, after-school PD. But you're absolutely right, you're President Youngblood. I mean, our ability to have, you know, teachers be able to come together, learn from one another, even free them up to go and observe one another in the classrooms, there's power in that. And that's definitely a part of our professional development that we offer.
Excellent. And I'm sure that Dr. Georgia Lopez is going to bring that ELOP program together, and it's going to help, help out these scores as well.
Extending the day, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
So one thing that was brought up this week was for middle school, I was, when I was on a couple of the campuses, they were talking about, you know, they have a seven-period day and they have two electives. And so one site wanted to pilot a six-period day. So the focus, they would take away one elective, but the focus could go back to math and, you know, English, Language Arts. And so I thought that was a good idea. And then as I kind of like, we talked with others, they thought that that was a good idea as well, because you don't take two electives in high school. I mean, maybe you do at the end, you know, when you're out of your classes. But when you go in, you don't take the two electives, you have the one elective opportunity. So I was thinking to myself, is that something that we need to do in our middle schools? Do we pilot a program and see if these scores raise and go to the six-period day? Or do, you know, or do we do it across the board? And I was going to say something else, but I forgot. It'll come back to me in a minute. It was probably really good. Oh, as part of the LCAP, I, I really do feel super strong about Travis Ranch's elementary school. I, I mean, we have to do something in those classrooms, because I, I, I honestly, if anyone has walked into these classrooms, it is actually like quite appalling. And to have like a room, you know, half of this size, or, or, you know, maybe three-quarters of this size, and to have four different classrooms in there, and you have all these teachers talking at the same time, and, you know, you just like look squirrel. I mean, it was just very, very hard. And so I just feel like there's something that we can do. I mean, we, we have to have, you know, I know we're looking for a construction supervisor, but we have to have something that we can do immediately to help, you know. And, and so I really feel strongly about putting that in the LCAP. I don't know if this has been brought up before, but I asked, I said, has this always been this way? And they said, yes, it's always been this way. And, you know, it was just, it was just completely shocking to me that, you know, and I asked, I said, what are your scores like? And they said, well, our, our scores are low. And so I think, well, maybe our scores would rise if these kids would actually concentrate, you know, when you're not having all of this, you know, distraction in the classroom. And so that was really, really, I, I, like, I think you could probably see the look on my face. I was so shocked. And so that, that should be really of utmost importance to our district, because how can we have all these other elementary school kids in one classroom, being taught, and it could be quiet and peaceful? And then, and, and we have that going on at Travis Ranch.
One of the things we want to bring back to you is, the board has given a lot of great ideas for how we can improve the district. Many of them facilities improvements, many of them personnel-based, and it's, kind of goes back to initial budget discussions. They're great ideas, and they all cost money. And so we, we plan to bring, it's, it's, right now, it's seven figures, easily, what's been brought forward. And again, if, if we all could wave a wand and do all those things, it'd be the right thing to do, right? It'd be the right thing for our kids. But that's not the way budgets work. And so we'll bring that back to you. And, you know, as we develop our budget this year, which is part of the LCAP process, but also part of the budgetary process, we can prioritize and look at how we can fit those things in.
Okay, I have some input. I really hope we can keep our academic support teachers and our resident subs. I've, I've seen really great things from those, those programs. I'm hoping that we can continue to do this. Also, training for teachers on phonics and language development fluency, and geared for all different grade levels and subjects. So like, if I'm a high school teacher, teaching science, how can I incorporate that into my science class? Also, I know you guys have been working on the English Language Development Master Plan. And I'm just, I would, I can't wait to see it. I'm excited. But also, I think the LCAP should have activities that are directly related to that master plan. And I'm not sure what it is, because I haven't been previewed to it, but I think they should be connected. I think when we get our English Language Development Master Plan, we need to make sure that the activities are directly related to it. I would love to see certificated teachers participating in our summer ELOP program, so that they could betterly, better assess and address the learning losses. I would like to see dyslexia training at an early age. And, and more parent training for language development, phonics, and things like that. I think those are important skills, and I think it'd be great. And of course, because I love parents, train, you know, training for our parents to be effective tutors. So when they're in the classrooms and, and participating, every school that I've gone to has a core group of parent volunteers. And you see them, and, and they're like, and they just are doing their job with their visitor badge. And it'd be so great to train them and help them be more effective in, in that. And those were just a couple of the ideas I came up with.
Those are fabulous. Thank you.
Going back to the score breakdowns, because I like numbers, could we get a score breakdown by school site? Just thinking about the Travis Ranch idea, that might be interesting to look at, to say, which site needs most attention?
And we can. So the dashboard does, it reports it by, by school site. You can, you know, look up anyone, but we can, you know, do a printout and do a report for you. Absolutely. Well, oh, the-
Isn't it on the website, everybody has their score?
So on, right. So on the, the dashboard does do it by, you know, high or low, it does give the scores, but then you can also go to the CDE website. But again, we'll, we'll run that, those reports for you, but it-
Oh, that is on the CDE website version?
Correct, yes. And you can access that. That's where it's all the percentages, that, you know, the, the graphs that we gave you are directly from there.
I, I think that would be a valuable tool as we go through this, to say, does the issue at Travis correlate to low scores at Travis? Are issues at, specifically at Valdez, related to score? I mean, and there's a lot of other factors, but that hasn't been even talked about. So if we're talking about money and where we're going to put it, that would be, facilities is a big question. So if we looked at it from that standpoint as well, that would be helpful, I think, to decide.
So actually, when we do our board study, you know, session, and, and we'll get it for you, you know, prior to that as well, but you, all of that information is typically included, and you'll, you'll receive it a couple of weeks ahead of time. And so that way, as you're looking at the proposed actions and the proposed plan, you know, you're able to, you know, have that to reference as well, and, you know, make informed decisions as you're previewing.
But you guys are using that to make decisions?
Correct, absolutely. Correct. Yes, yes. That, that drives everything we do, actually. Yeah.
Piggybacking on Maryland's dyslexia comment, because I remember, I think I had brought it up a few months ago. And I thought, isn't there a school in Orange County that deals directly with dyslexia?
Yes.
And I can't remember, because I drank too much Diet Coke in my twenties, so it's like done something in my brain. But I can't remember what it's called. But, but it is something nearby. And a lot of teachers have said that it is like, they've only sent of, you know, a few. And they said that it's come back, and they've been able to, you know, to teach. And, and it's done wonders with that. And so just piggybacking on yours. And then another thing too, I don't know exactly, I brought this up with the whole, and I'm not, and this is just, you know, calling around, but I called one school, and then when they talked about that they were using Singapore math, and their math scores were at 87%, what they did was, they said that they taught Singapore math the entire school year. And they did a three-week crash course in Common Core before the state testing came around. And they came out at 87%. And so I was wondering if, if we're able to use these type of tools, that maybe it can help our test scores. And like I'm, I'm saying, I'm just going off of what I was told. And it just seemed like it was a little creative and a little different. So-
I'd love to get the name of the district that you spoke to, we could find out more about it. From what I understand about Singapore Math, I think it's an enrichment program. It's not necessarily your, you know, used as your core, but I'd love to learn more from them on how they did that. Yeah.
Promise, last question, from me anyways. On the, the five areas of greatest need, I don't see, I see chronic absenteeism. I don't see declining enrollment. Is that integrated into one of these that's not caught out specifically? Is that?
It's, well, remember, we-
But finance marketing to get kids to come to the district is what I'm saying.
And it's all intertwined. I think, you know, remember, we have to identify our areas of greatest need based on what the dashboard is reporting out. So, I mean, how we embed that and, you know, include that, you know, and I think, I think it's all related, right? I think if we're addressing a lot of these components, it's ultimately going to, you know, impact enrollment. Right?
Just curious why it wasn't on there.
Yeah, typically, the dashboard deals with the students you have. I mean, how are we addressing those students' needs? Just, just to, to your point too, just looking at the scores for Travis Ranch last year, 72.5% were proficient in ELA, 60.75% proficient in math, and among the higher scores in the district.
Another thought was also too, is, and it's, we, are we giving principals some freedom at their sites? Like, because obviously, every single site is different, and they have different needs. And so are the principals able to make the decisions, like, like what we talked about earlier? You know, some people really liked, they felt that the AR was great for their school. Are they given that opportunity to use AR in their school, whereas this next principal says, well, that's not good for my school, I want to use something else? Are we giving our principals that type of, that type of freedom to try what's best for their school, instead of possibly like trying to have everybody on the same pathway? Is that something that we do? Or is it something we can look at?
I can speak to that. And I'm, I'm glad you, you raised that, because it was brought up earlier this evening. And so specifically to AR, that was actually something back in, goodness, I think it was 2018, where, you know, at the time, we, there were a couple factors at play. We were bringing in I-Ready was the first piece of it. And so we really needed everyone to be able to, you know, adopt that and, and commit to it. And we were receiving a lot of parent complaints about AR from, from, from several schools. And part of that had to do with the fact that it was being used as part of a grade, which it's not intended to be. It's really, it is an enrichment program. It's meant to incentivize reading. And so, and, and if used properly, it can absolutely do so. But that was not what we were experiencing at that time. And so it was made at the time, you know, a decision that was made to, that we were going to discontinue use of AR, allowing us and students and teachers to really, you know, get to know and, and learn I-Ready. So that was one of the reasons. But even at that point, it was always something that, yes, we allowed, you know, schools to use it. It was, it was paid for by the PTAs.
Right.
And, but at that time, yes, it was, that was sort of a district-wide decision. From what I understand, I know some schools have continued to use it. And when we do find out about it, you know, then we have that conversation with the principal. But that, you know, the, the reasoning has never been, I know, you mentioned earlier that it was, you know, we, we've, Ed Services said it was the board that decided. That is absolutely never been, you know, something that we've shared. We've, we take responsibility of that. I think, yes, we have, you know, had conversations with teachers, with principals, who do still continue. I think it's maybe one or two, you know, who have, have continued to use it. It's always something that we would, you know, we remain open to. But again, I think, you know, going back to the reasons we did it, was, it was, it was being used also as a disciplinary and, and for, you know, punishment in many ways, where, you know, some teachers were keeping students there if they didn't reach their, you know, their allotment. And so that's where the complaints were coming in. And once again, this is back in 2018, when that decision was made. If we were to decide to go back to it and, and, and look at it as a, as a consideration, I think we'd want to look at the big picture of it and, and see, you know, what other programs, AR is not the only program. There are, you know, others at some schools, you know, want to use. So I think we'd have to agree, and we would, you know, take direction from the board on that, on what we would be willing to- So I think we'd have to agree and we would, you know, take direction from the board on that, on what we would be willing to, you know, allow. And anytime we can, we want, you know, schools to be able to have that autonomy to make some of those decisions themselves.
So it kind of sounds like AR was having the same problems that iReady was doing. It was being used not in the same manner and as grading and disciplinary and all that stuff. So it kind of seems like maybe we're just having an issue with how our programs are run and we need to lock that in a little bit better.
You're right. It's a little, it does sound a little familiar.
Sounds a little familiar when you said that, yeah.
I think the difference with iReady is it is intended as a, it's an instructional tool, it is an intervention tool, and it is a diagnostic, which AR, you know, it doesn't necessarily, you know, it measures our students' comprehension as they are completing books, but it's not necessarily to the level of the diagnostic piece that iReady is, yeah. And I know that's ongoing.
I was the AR person for library at Fairmont for six years. So I remember AR.
You were a fan of it, I'm assuming?
Well, I just felt, my kids said it helped and everybody seemed to help. And I just remember if you, you know, it was always like if you hadn't read your book, you got another, you know, they sat in the, in the library and they read their book, and then the next library date, they came back in and they did their tests. You know, I'm not for or against it. I'm just saying that there are so many teachers who are asking for it to come back. And so I said I would bring it forward.
Sure, we appreciate that. And just on the topic of iReady, I know that has been an ongoing, you know, subject. And we, as you know, we included some of those questions again in the survey data. So we're looking forward to receiving that and we'll be sharing that, you know, with the board as well when, when we get those results. I think that'll be very telling. But what we are, you know, looking at as a possibility for next year is, you know, keeping it and reducing it back to just elementary and using it as just the diagnostic, you know, portion of it. And so that way, you know, we're still able to use it for progress monitoring, but not necessarily the instructional piece for all students. So that was, you know, just taking your input and feedback there as well, yeah.
I just wanted to add my voice over here that it seems like all these, the supplement programs, they all kind of tend to have the same kind of issues. And so I just think whatever, however we move forward, we just really need to be clear with our policies, how these programs are supposed to be utilized, and just real clear expectations for our teachers. There's no, you know, wiggle room and that it's being monitored and so that... Because I hate seeing these good programs be, well, not underutilized, but being, you know, like naysay, negative, you know, connotations directed with them because it was misused. And when they are valuable tools, you know, my kids did AR. They loved it. It was a big part of our family growing up. But I could see how it could be, you know, misutilized. And so I just think whatever, however we move forward with those type of things, that we just really have to have clear guidelines, expectations set so that they're not misused.
Great.
Okay, is that, is that all?
I think I gave a long list at the last meeting and I'm sure you took notes.
We do. We captured it and, yes, indeed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, folks, moving on. Next, we come to under. The actions proposed for the consent calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and are deemed routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda packet backup information, sorry, in advance of the scheduled meetings and are prepared to vote with knowledge on the block vote items. So at this time, are there any items that need to be polled?
18 and 19.
18 and 19. Okay, for the remaining items, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Trustee Anderson and trustee Frazier seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor are four. And the motion carries for zero. Okay, let's talk about number 18 then.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with Pacific Oaks College from February 7th, 2023 through February 6th, 2026.
I'll second.
I looked on the Pacific Oaks College websites and online college and the opening, the opening page talked a lot about social justice. It talked a lot about all kinds of stuff. And I was just curious, again, if they are aware of our critical race theory ban. I think I asked this yesterday. I didn't really get, I don't, I don't think I got a follow-up. But I was just, I was just curious because that was one of their highlighted, their page really highlighted a lot of things and it didn't seem like it talked too much about education. And then I'm also too concerned that we're only paying the master teachers to educate these kids $250 a month. And I'm trying to, I know that it says non-negotiable, but I just feel like this is just such a little amount of money for these semester-long classes. Like I know Azusa Pacific, they're paying their student teachers like $555. And so I'm hoping that we're not just pulling, pulling, you know, kid or student teachers in and not really paying our master teachers.
You said student teachers. You meant master teachers, right?
I'm sorry, master teachers, sorry. We're not paying our student teachers. Too much Diet Coke in my twenties. So, no, so I was, that's kind of my concern. I don't know if we know a lot about this college. And, and so I just would feel more comfortable with more information if they were clear, if it was clear, they clearly know that we have a critical race theory ban because it seems like social justice areas is a huge part of their college and their curriculum.
I can speak to that. I know it was addressed at our last meeting, but in reviewing the university agreement, there's explicit language about the student teachers who are placed here needing to follow the, whatever district they get placed in, because they can be placed in a variety of different places. Whatever policies are in place, that they are to follow those, and that is in the written agreement.
That's in the written agreement with us and them?
It is.
Okay.
With that knowledge, do you think we could combine consent calendars 18 and 19 into one vote?
Yes, that's what I was going to do.
Well, the, I only have, I have questions about 19 because it deals with the clinical side, not necessarily student teacher side. So I just have questions.
Perfect.
Sorry.
That's okay. I tried.
Okay. How did they come to us or did they just reach out? What happened?
We get requests from universities throughout the year for a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's the university itself that is aware of the programs and the things that we offer, and they want their students to receive that. Sometimes the student themselves have a connection. They're a graduate of our district and are going there and want to come back home to implement it. So it's for a variety of reasons.
So this could just be a couple of students who went to school. Okay, got it. I, I really do wish though that we could raise the rate of the master teacher. That really is bothering me. Like every month, when I keep seeing that the wage, it bothers me. And so I'm just, I'm, I'm just hoping that somehow we can, I don't know, negotiate some raises for them because, I mean...
Well, that's paid from the college, correct?
Right. So I'm just, I'm just saying we should. I mean, it seems criminal, but that's okay. Another fight for another day.
Okay, so is there any more questions regarding 18 or 19, since we combined them?
Are we combining?
Well, we did not. Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on 18. I already have a first and a second on it. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, 4-0. Okay, so I need a motion on number 19 then.
I'll make a motion to approve the clinical affiliation agreement with Pacific Oaks College from February 7th, 2023 through February 6th, 2026.
I'll second.
Okay, I have initial motion and a second. All those in favor?
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
Don't use that gavel yet. I'm curi, it, it talks about clinical affiliation. I'm curious, is this standard? Do we have other clinical affiliations with other colleges in place? Have we done this before? That just seems unique to me.
It is. It's more common like with psychology and that's what this one is. So you don't see it for student teaching, but for things of that nature, you'll see it.
So they're student teachers in psychology or they're coming in and they're going to be doing counseling stuff?
Yeah, it's the same university, but two different departments providing, assigning students for different purposes.
So what are the students under this agreement going to be doing?
For psychology. They'll be assigned to one of our psychologists.
Okay, so they're not student teaching. They're going to be, and I think I saw something in additional information about their credentials. These are masters students, correct?
Graduate level.
Graduate level. Yes, thank you. Okay. Have we ever done this before?
Many of our universities, we have multiple partnerships with, with student teaching, with school counselors, with administrators. So with one, you know, we could have three or four, and so the criteria is different depending on what program they're in.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. So can I go ahead and make a vote on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No? Okay, 4-0. All right, we're getting there.
We should be there, right?
Absolutely. Okay. I need to make, have a motion for adjournment.
Are you going to adjourn?
I'm going to, I'll adjourn it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, in this adjournment, as Dr. Matthews and others had mentioned earlier this evening, tonight we will be adjourning in the memory of our counselor at Bernardo Yorba Middle School, Ms. Stacy Callaway, who passed away over the weekend. She was a caring mother, daughter, wife, sister, and friend to so many. Around Bernardo Yorba's campus and beyond, she is known for a deep personal connections that she created with students, staff, and families alike through her work as a counselor and as a dedicated member of our school district. She was an incredibly talented counselor, even referred to as a hero by some people that had the pleasure to work alongside of her. She will be deeply missed. Okay, all those in favor, adjournment?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Good night, folks. Next, at March 14th.